I fully believe to the right of the United States and America and to the public for which it stands. My mission under our individual's oath of honor is to assist them all.
Okay, we have the approval minutes. Has everybody read the minutes? Is there any additions, corrections? Not a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Matery will approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Holmes. Is there any more discussion on the minutes? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Minutes approved. Approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections, questions, subtractions?
Well, the only thing I guess they brought up last meeting with Kevin Edson there with that stuff out there.
Yep, that's on the old and unfinished. That's what that.
Well, I thought that's building permit here.
No, that's on the old and unfinished business would be the public nuisance of eighty-eighty highway eighty-three south. That's already on there. Now it'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
The only other thing I got is Edson may have called me about that fence down by the cemetery. But I looked at that. I don't know if the guy could do anything there or not, but.
I think just now if you imagine whatever shade pulls out and.
Yeah, but I. But I don't think the, I don't think that, you know, if the maintainer hit it with something else, it would be something else, but I think it just got covered with snow and got pushed down, I think.
They said snow was pushed up against it.
I think snow. Well, I don't know. There's quite a ways away from the road.
I don't know.
I wouldn't look at it, but I don't know. They're wondering if we could do something there and I don't know if that's, if county has special things for cemeteries or a special deal there or not. I don't really know.
Well, I'll tell you what, why don't we just add fences from snow removal onto the old and unfinished business here to the agenda because I have one or two things we could probably bring up too then we can see what we're gonna do as a group with some of this stuff. How we want to handle it. So we'll add that to the agenda. Is there anything else?
You have to add to the agenda when people call in on road issues or what?
Um, I don't think so.
No, you need to bring it to.
Yeah, I mean, most of that, you know, that's kind of when Skyler comes in for the county road department, that's kind of the open spot. Okay, now I'll have a maintain a motion to approve the amended agenda. I'll make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Edley to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Materi. Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. So the first order of business on old and unfinished business is the director of tax equalization position. Commissioner Holmes, myself, and Arnel Adice did the interviews. There was two candidates and I think the consensus from that group is that we didn't have any qualified candidates. We had no experience. Just good people. I mean, nice people, but it would have been, it would have been a lot to have them take the training. I didn't feel like we had any qualified candidates. So I think we're gonna have to reevaluate maybe some of the pay or some of the job duties or something, kind of reevaluate a little bit, probably just relist it. So that was the recommendation from that.
So are they putting another add-on or what?
Yeah, they'll probably just have to relist it, but I think we'll probably have to, you know.
Maybe add it on to the way we gotta agree on what we want to do.
I think that was part of the discussion too is that the the pay was probably a little on the light side too, which is, you know, one of the things the candidates kind of brought up.
It's funny that last time we had like six or eight people.
Yeah, and this time we had, we had two and to put it politely, I don't even think they really quite understood what the job even was. Just, I mean, not that they didn't understand it, but just that there was no familiarity with the office at all. Would have been a pretty long process to get them trained in. I think it would have been pretty difficult, so. That was kind of, yeah, so. And then the veterans officer position, we had, it was Commissioner Holmes, myself, and Michelle Masser interviewed and we had five candidates? Two interviewed? Four. I mean, we, basically, we had, we had two that.
One with one.
That's right. That's what we interviewed. We had four. We had four interviews and then, yeah, the fifth one was over the phone and and then we had two basically that were, I don't know. Do you have that information, like the scoring codes?
I have two letters for two guys too, but I think I submitted. Maybe you did.
Yeah, so the two leading point scores in the point system were separated by one at two hundred and sixty-three points, the other one at two hundred and forty-nine. You know, that, out of two hundred and sixty-some points, basically they're separated by fourteen points. It's very close. Both of them are veterans. Both of them are more than qualified. So, you know, just going through, if you just want to go through and do the interviews and the points total, there is a winner. I did not have that person as my leading points person. I mean, I had it separated by the five and ten points. I mean, it was close, so. I don't know. We were kind of, had mixed reviews in the, as far as opinions with the group even, it wasn't. So I don't know what the right decision to really do is. I mean, obviously you can just take the lead with one score on interviewer and that would be that.
What I would like to see is to re-interview the two and have all five commissioners involved in it. That would, that would be my recommendation.
On the top two?
On the top two, just the top two.
You would have to interview them in a public meeting though, because you can't do executive session for interviews for a public office. So that'd be the only thing. I don't know. I just, I can tell you that it was, it's a really tough decision because like I said, the candidate that took second in the points very closely, I had as my lead person too. So we even had a split decision even with the group. So that's where it's kind of, it's kind of tough. I mean, and then also, like you said, there's the, the local element. I mean, there's the letters of recommendation. There's all these, they're basically job references. So, you know, when it comes to that candidate too, I mean, it's not really supposed to be up for consideration, but I mean, there are people out in the public that have basically referenced one candidate that they would like and so not saying that that's plain to the position, but I mean, you also have a good reason for not hiring that person when the same veterans in the county are advocating for some of the two of us.
Would you two guys consider re-interviewing these two people? I mean, they.
Well, I, I agree with, I just feel like in this scenario, when they're this close, it's a difficult decision. I mean, it's, there is no, both candidates were outstanding. Both of them are qualified. It's, it's really not like there's a bad decision and that's what makes it so hard is like it just, it's, somebody had a little better day than the other in an interview and so, and that's the only thing is I think re-interviewing the top two candidates is probably the fairest way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
So I guess that was kind of what we had talked about in the, even in the meeting that day too is that, you know, re-interviewing is maybe the best situation. So I don't know what you guys think about it.
That's what I, I think.
I mean, the only other thing that I thought it would be to have two other commissioners interview.
That would be the other thing I would recommend.
You know, instead of us re-interviewing the same people, having two other commissioners and you know, either, you know, Marlist or, I have almost like three different people interviewing and see if they come up with the same type of scenario or I mean, that's, I know it's hard, but it's, it's difficult because they're both disabled veterans. They both qualify for all, I mean, they're, and we want to be fair. We don't want to be prejudiced to one or the other and that's where, if you pick one, the other one's gonna have a damn good reason to wonder why they didn't get the job too. So properly vetting them by interviewing again is probably the best way to do it.
Just have two other commissioners besides me and Mayra.
I think that'd be the best way to do it. And if you have, if the committee comes up with the same scenario, you know what you got. If they don't, then, I don't.
No, I agree. That's what it should be, yeah.
Maybe, maybe take the point totals of the two combined and then that's the winner. So I mean, that'd be the fairest way to do it and just be fair to everybody. Be perfect and you want to be prejudiced to. Well, I, I guess if it was me, if it was me, I, I would, I would just have two commissioners and so, and we could set up another date to interview.
I didn't, Michelle.
No, Michelle sat in. So I mean, I mean, the only other thing would be to try and set it up by like the end of the month. Sometime in the month of May here, because I think Jeff is leaving in July. So we'd like to get somebody in here by June probably.
Well, you're not re-advertising or just.
No, we're just re-interviewing. I just request those people to come and just. Well, I'm just saying sometime between now and the end of the month, whatever date works for them. Even, you don't even have to do them the same day. You know what I mean? You could interview one person one morning and one the next if it works out. Well, I think you could sweep, just sort that out after the meeting or something. I mean, whatever. Between Dave, Dan and between the three Ds here, we can figure out which two are gonna be on the committee and when they're gonna pick it and see if you want to sit in on it or maybe Josh. I actually maybe. Oh, yeah, so that's not. Okay, I understand. So I was even thinking since you were a veteran, that'd be a good, so. I'd find a third person to interview them and try and have it done by the end of the month, whatever days work for them, mornings, afternoons and try and work it out and just interview them both again. I think that'd be the best. So that's the veterans position.
Just the two candidates, right?
Yeah, just the two candidates. They were the two, they were certainly even close on the points, so. Say interview them two again. I think the decision is we'll take the cumulative point total of the two interviews and whoever wins that wins. That's just fair.
Exactly.
So. Okay, unless they tie, then I don't know. We'll cross that bridge when we get there. The odds of that are unlikely, but I would say interviewing again would be the fairest way. So, okay. Variance and building permit for Mike Dear Wester tabled from the last meeting. Did you get a chance to go out and look at it again with the?
Oh, I wasn't listening. What?
Oh, that variance for Ten Vic.
Yeah.
You were out there.
Have I talked about that now?
Yep.
Alright, so you measured kind of rough guess of where he's gonna put the garage. So as you guys remember, the road is off and actually right about here, it's off about twenty-five feet. And where he wants to put the building, after measuring, the front setback is good because it'd be plus more than forty feet. So in the northeast good. And this one, actually after measuring the line, the far east wall of that building would actually be where that center line where the road should be. And then it's. So the dimensions, again, thirty-six by, I think it's.
Forty-eight.
So thirty-six by forty-eight. So then it's going to actually his property, three or four feet, so.
So that road should actually be over there for there, huh?
Yeah, and actually you can tell right here, it's about thirty-three feet off. It curves and it comes back. It's from his property line here, it's about thirty-two feet off.
You see that barn, that barn sitting right in the middle of the road right away? And that house that I door down is sitting right in the middle of the road right away?
Yeah, the house is right here. And you think so that their garage right over where that used to be.
Joe, are we looking at any kind of legal precedent or something with that road being where it is? I mean, it's probably been there longer than any of us have been alive. That's almost basically like, I mean, it's like the new road almost. I shouldn't say new, but you get what I'm saying, like. I, I feel like in this situation, like someone wanting to come in and move that road to the proper spot would almost have a harder time now. But I mean, that's kind of basically almost been reestablished as like the new right of way. It's been there so long, not, I mean.
Well, I mean, we ran into this problem with Beaver Bay though too. We got a road that's in the Weber property and now we're gonna move the road.
That's true.
But I think this one is a unique situation. I believe Mike owns the property that the road is on as well.
Yeah, I did acquire the other lots that you said.
On the other side of the road?
So I'm on both sides of that whole block now.
Well, then, yeah, that definitely, I mean, that changes.
You got that bought? You got that acquired?
He bought.
Yes.
Okay.
Those two and those two are mine.
I got that and he's got this whole block on both sides and.
So really, so you don't, you don't own that, that southeast corner of that intersection right there though, right? No, uh, that one.
Yeah, he owns that.
Oh, so you own all four corners of that whole.
This whole.
Okay.
So then we could actually.
Well, then that's, that's a lot different deal too then, because that's where you're not really affecting an adjoining landowner there. So that's where I, yeah, that. Okay, well, that was cool. Well, that's, that makes it a lot easier. I guess in my mind then it's.
It does. I mean, obviously you could sell that and then.
Right, but I mean, once you have the situation where someone owns all the land and they're changing it, then selling it after that, you're kind of inheriting those, you know, it, it's a different deal if we're going, oh yeah, we're, we're totally granting this road to be on someone else's property. When, when the person who owns that property is asking for that request, it's kind of like, okay, if that's the way you want to manage that property now, now after you sell it, make sure you sell it in a scenario where you're not condemning yourself to that road getting, you know what I mean? Like don't go sell that property now and then be mad that someone wants to move that road out their property. You get what I'm saying? Like now that you own all four of those affected properties and you want to, you know, that just in my mind changes it a little bit, so.
Yeah, I guess it would have to be some type of agreement or he does sell.
Well, I think down the road, yeah, if it gets sold, it more than likely is probably gonna get sold as up one piece anyway almost, or you know, like you'll just have that road right of way in there in the event that someone would want to change it. So I, I guess now that you've purchased that other property and you basically own all the properties affected, I guess I don't have a problem with the variance now, so.
I don't either, I guess.
I don't.
With the exception of agreement, if it whatever gets sold.
Right, I mean, that would be the only thing, but that would be more on between him and the next landowner if he was gonna sell it anyway really with that situation, so.
When, if and when I sell it, because I'm, I will sell it eventually, it's gonna go as one piece.
Right, I mean, and then with that case, I mean, you're basically selling it now with the understanding that, you know, you really don't own that right of way. You, I mean, you, with right of way, there's always the ability of someone to move that road. So if you'd sell like that one piece, you could have an issue with that down the road. I mean, you understand that, right? I mean, that's where, now that you own the property, it's not a big deal, but if you would sell just that one lot over there and that person doesn't want that road there, that creates an issue again like we had earlier, so.
Then the building would actually be on the road.
Well, I'm just saying, that's where, and I don't have a problem with the variance now because he owns all the property, but that's where it's.
Well, I could grant us a, an easement for right of way for like, say, the west twenty-five feet of those east lots maybe. And then that way, if we're concerned at all, we have a road right of way on that, on that portion of the west side of the east parcels. You know, so that would, that would kind of take care of this.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at is I'm not really concerned with that. It's, it's Mike that needs to be concerned with that now, because now that he is altering the property that he owns, it's fine. But if he would sell that property, he'd either have to grant an easement or allow that road to be moved. That's the, the understanding, like, the scenario is probably not gonna play itself out. It would. That's the, I mean, that's the issue with granting a variance is that you're allowing that right of way to be affected, but since Mike owns all the land around it, he essentially owns all the way up to the middle of the right of way technically. So I really don't have an issue with it. It's not like we're impacting someone else's property right now. It's all Mike, so I don't really have a problem with the variance, but.
So, so does that get used by other people a lot?
No, what was that?
Does that get used by other people quite a bit?
It's never been drove on this frame. It, no. The only people that use it are thieves when they're shopping.
Well, it still is technically right of way though. I mean, it still has access.
How about we close it or what? I mean.
That's what I say. I, you know, why don't you just close that block?
Well, the issue we had before was we had several landowners that said that they use that road and whether or not they use it enough to justify it or not.
Yeah, one landowner.
Well, we were also, we're considering a much larger chunk of road to be closed. We're going up further north, plus there was some east-west alleyway.
And the last time we, I have the road thing up here, the two women called in. They don't live in Ten Vic.
The brother does, right?
The brother does, but that doesn't, I mean, does that, you know, I, I don't know, I mean.
Well, I think.
I was told to get people that own land and have them sign that petition is what, and that's what I did.
But the big difference is, is you were petitioning to close a right of way that had other landowners like that Whittico property involved. Now that you've purchased that, like that piece from the Ten Vic road there down to Lincoln Street at least, you could almost just close that. And if that was the case, if he, because he is the landowner on all four sides and he petitions that.
That's what I thought.
I mean, you'd still have the access going through that. You would still have it on Lincoln Street up to that right of way.
Right.
That would all still be open.
Right.
So I mean, that is, that's a different scenario then. I mean, that would kind of solve the the road issue too, because if he owns the land on all the sides on it really, I mean, he's really technically altering the value of those properties by altering the access as well. So, I mean, as long as it's not an issue now, if he wants to sell their properties, it's basically gonna be a private road through there and would have to be maintained or done something, you know. What, what I'm saying is you're putting more onus on a private landowner instead of having responsibility of other people, so. I'd say for the moment, I have no problem with the variance though. I think we might as well go forward with that, then I guess, if you want to petition to close that piece right of way there, then that's something we can discuss at a later time, but.
So we, they should, we should have a variance going through there that, even if it isn't right down the center of that road anymore. You know what I mean?
Well, and that's where, like you said, when that road is not even on the right spot, maybe that is.
Well, what did Joe, what did you say to do? You wanted to move the right of way and put it over on the, the east side twenty-five feet or something, you said?
Well, I said if they were concerned about granting a variance, they could, they could get an easement from you for right of way purposes on the east side or the west side of those east parcels. Alternatively, if they want to just grant you the variance and, you know, you could draft that petition again, but reduce it just to these, to that stretch of, of road that we're discussing today. It's still, you're still gonna need to get six signatures from landowners in the area. And you won't have to do the notice requirement because you'll have, you own all the properties though. And the way the century code reads is at least seventy percent of the landowners sign the petition. Then you can dispense with the notice. So you don't have to serve yourself, but you still have to get those, you still have to find five other folks that live around the area that own property to sign back your petition. That's just the rules there. So you won't have to publish notice and you won't have to serve anybody, but we still have to have a hearing on the matter. So if you file a petition with the auditor, put you back on the agenda.
Right.
And close that little chunk of road there for you. I think that, that would make some sense. And then if they want to grant the variance beforehand, I don't see the issue.
So if we grant, if we grant the variance now, I could get started on my building.
Right.
And then get, and then go ahead and then pursue the road closure and it wouldn't affect the variance one way or the other, correct?
No, I don't think, right?
No, yeah, once, once the road's closed, the variance kind of becomes.
Moved.
Moved, yeah.
Yeah. I'd say for now with just the variance and the building permit, that would be the topic of discussion. And yeah, if we grant that, then you'd be able to start on the project if you want, so. So I guess in that discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve table or deny the variance and building permit for Mike Dear Wester that was tabled in the last meeting. Make a motion? Somebody's gotta make a motion.
I'll hear.
And that motion is?
To accept this variance that he's asking for.
Okay. Commissioner Materi makes a motion to approve the variance and building permit for Mike Dear Wester that was tabled from the last meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Culver. Is there any more discussion on the variance and building permit for Mike Dear Wester tabled from the last meeting? Any more discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Variance and building permit approved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. The county park board meeting's in five minutes here, so we'll probably move the public nuisance to that, because it's probably gonna take a little longer than that. The other quick discussion we could have, and if we don't finish it by nine-thirty, we'll move it on to, is the Beaver Bay Road. There's been a request by the group that it's going good. They're collecting the money, but they're about thirty-five hundred dollars short of the estimated cost to do the work they want to do.
They're over five thousand dollars short. If, but they're waiting for some money.
Okay.
What was the estimated cost?
I don't know.
Nineteen thousand five hundred was the estimate.
Okay.
So are you holding a money form now?
And I think I gave you guys in your packet an Excel sheet that shows you are paid. Saving, you're gonna have to save here.
Yeah, come around.
Well, I remember seeing that. Is Phil Volks still on?
We have two park, um, board members. We have Andy and Dean. Cities can come if they want.
Oh.
Please Phil Volks, Phil on the cities, okay?
Didn't know if Phil was on yet. He's in a tough shape there. I didn't know if Phil was on. I thought he was in a tough shape a little bit.
Yeah, I don't think they got the.
Money.
Oh, cause I was gonna say it wasn't in the, oh, okay, here it is. I was looking at the fact. Well, we'll probably just table that stuff for now because the park board meeting's gonna be starting here in a minute, so we can discuss that after. It's close enough to nine-thirty, so we will, during the county commission meeting, park board meeting will commence.
They will call meetings over there. Have you all received many stuff from the last meeting? Is there a motion here?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any old business to bring up this one, Lord? Okay. We'll connect with a little. You already fused. Before it's over there?
The twenty-twenty-two expenditures that we had was thirty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars. The twenty-twenty-two expenditures that we had was three-one-thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars for forty-eight steps. And that includes the maintenance to Langlers, that includes, um, the maintenance to Rice Lake, the Kemmenton, we all could be on late. And then for twenty-twenty-three budgeted, we budgeted sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, which includes fifteen thousand to be distributed, eight hundred for the utilities. And then we figured, um, Langlers, maintenance to Langlers of eighteen thousand, maintenance to Rice Lake for two thousand, which I think we're gonna be short, we should probably went higher than that. And then we also did a, um, a miscellaneous for thirty thousand, and that's to, put a water line in if we think we need a water line. There was something about maybe having to put a water line with them?
Well, the issue's always been is that Langler's Bay has run off of the well that was at the, uh, was the old Dale Davis farm, or residence there. Uh, I don't know who owns it anymore, and it hasn't been an issue, so. I don't think there's a lot of water use down at Langlers anyway, overall, so it hasn't really been an issue, so I don't know.
Can I take that thirty thousand more?
Well, it's always hard to say, because at any moment you have a, you have an owner that decides that they don't want them on that well, or don't, you don't, Dale, I think originally helped out with that, and it was never an issue, and now I don't even know.
Throw it back to the Landowners.
I don't, I don't know who owns that property anymore. It's been sold, I think, once or twice since now, so.
Is that a story?
Uh, no idea.
Is Dale's way stolen?
I just, I just know that that was always kind of.
They're both gone.
They're all deceased?
Yeah.
But that farm, that place has been sold, I think maybe even twice since Dale had it, once for sure. And so, uh, you know, it's never been an issue with that water, because I don't think there's a ton of water used down there, but I think we always left it in for the day that it might be an issue, so. I think.
So, going into twenty-twenty-four.
Well, you know, you probably could take it off, because if there's any case, you'd just be short of Langlers water for a little bit, and then you'd have to budget for the next year or so. Because we've been budgeting for it for years, it's never been an issue, it kind of seems like overkill.
Okay, what about chip sealing, you know, we, in some years we can put in something for chip sealing?
That, at the Langlers parking lot, right? And then that also, do we maintain the road going in there too, though?
Well, the county does that, but we, the park doesn't do it for that though.
Right, so this is the park board budget, that's not, yeah.
Because as we get into the twenty-twenty-four budgeting, we should know.
Well, could you just take that miscellaneous from thirty down to, uh, like fifteen, or then could you use the miscellaneous for chip sealing if that were the case? If, you know, I mean, I'd say cut it in half and put about fifteen thousand in there, and then if you want to do some chip sealing, if you have to do something with the water, you could then at least do something with it. Then we're not budgeting so much for something that obviously hasn't been an issue, at least for now. Of course, whoever's watching the meeting now may be an issue. I'd say cut it down to fifteen for the miscellaneous, and we can use it if we want to do that. Anybody have a problem with that?
And then last year for ma- for maintenance to Langlers Bay, we spent nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Fifty-seven cents, and then Rice Lake was six thousand forty dollars, so. You know, almost sixteen thousand, and we budgeted eighteen, so we were okay last year, and I think we'll be okay this year. So, what you guys probably do is decide how you want to distribute the fifteen thousand dollars. Last year you allocated twenty-five hundred to the city park, the Measor Park, the Braddock Park, Great City Park, and the Park of Kin Tired. And you allocated twelve hundred and fifty dollars to the Stroudberg City, and another twelve hundred and fifty to the Stroudberg Park Expansion. And we have a request from Anna, and then there's some other people that have some requests.
What did we get, what did we get to City of Stroudberg, twelve hundred dollars?
We gave twelve hundred and fifty to the city park, and then the park expansion, we gave another twelve hundred and fifty.
Basically, Stroudberg got twenty-five hundred, just whatever.
So, you got that, the whole thing, I think it's been in there.
If you do the same to the other. There might be some people here that have something to say, I don't know, city park people, yeah.
Do you have any idea, like, it looks like here one of the big things was upgrading your park body, so do you have any idea on costs or anything, or?
No, my nephew, his, um, works for Sister Law, so I would, we would certainly would not get a new one.
Okay.
See about the, I mean, times, and that, but, oh, yeah, it's been a period of some age.
And it's the same one I'm thinking of then, because that's the, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking, um, you know, since we cut that miscellaneous from thirty thousand to fifteen, so we did cut out fifteen thousand, what if we added another three thousand to the distribution and gave everybody another five hundred bucks? So, it'd be three thousand for each one. I mean, costs are going up, I mean, five hundred bucks is not huge, but at least it's more than before, so then everybody would get three thousand instead of twenty-five hundred. I mean, that's just thinking out loud there, since we, we're, we're still cutting down the budget, but we could increase the distribution a little bit.
Yeah. I see, okay, everything there? City of Hague, is there, you guys okay there?
What?
Yeah, there we go.
Are you guys okay in the City of Hague there, as far as everything there?
City of Hague.
The park?
They need to do something with the park, it's horrible.
As far as?
It actually needs new playground equipment.
Could you apply for grants, didn't Stroudberg get a grant?
Right, yes.
The city board, like, hates you, apply for grants for playground equipment, I think the money's out there to the head.
Yeah, because Stroudberg raised around forty thousand bucks for that playground equipment, right?
Well, I think so, yeah.
Through donations and grants, yeah.
Who, who writes to grants?
I have no idea.
I don't know who wrote that, what are we applying for? We'd have to talk to somebody.
Talk to Sonia.
Someone, so, Stroudberg, Sonia, she's the one that was insurmountable, they get aggressive on that, right?
Right. I think they did that same thing at Hazelton there.
On that's later.
Or two years ago.
Yeah.
That Leanne Donnelly, um, was, I think, kind of being, uh, writing their grants off.
Kind of the park board took, took control of that, kind of, right? Hazelton Park Board did that, huh?
Yeah, and they got a lot of that new playground equipment there too, but, yeah. They, they done some fundraising and stuff too, they had a couple of sufferers and that kind of stuff, you know.
Well, I think, I think the big intent of the distribution, at least from the county park side, is hopefully mostly just for the maintenance, the general, the, grass mowing and paying a light bill, things like that, you know, I, I mean, I think when it comes to, big investments like playground equipment, I mean, if you want to squirrel away some of that money, fine, but, you know, we don't want to make the distribution so big that we're funding all the parks either, so that's the. I mean. Right, I mean, that's where I think the distribution is, hopefully just to help out the maintenance costs, keep them looking decent, so we can, you know, we can enjoy the parks, so.
Okay, do you make a motion then, Lou?
I, I guess I would, I would make a motion to increase the distribution to, uh, eighteen thousand from fifteen thousand. And then, uh, distribute to each park. Uh, basically, it would be three thousand for Hazelton, three thousand for Kin Tired, three thousand for Braddock, and then fifteen hundred to each of the city park, for, this, you know, Stroudbergs, to total three thousand. Linton would get three thousand, and Hague would get three thousand. That would be my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll check it.
Okay, motion carried. Any other big issues?
I make a motion to adjourn. Okay. Thanks for coming in, folks. We'll call the county meeting back to order. We do have about five more minutes till Jeff's on the agenda with the, uh, housing authorities and board member replacements, so. Thanks for coming in, guys, appreciate it. So, quick on the Beaver Bay Road, uh, something we can probably just think about, and we'll talk about it later, is that, essentially, they have a, they have an estimated, uh, goal of about nineteen thousand. And, uh, looks to me like they're roughly about five thousand-ish short, which looks like, to me, just several landowners haven't paid their, uh, their six hundred and fifty dollars. Oh, excuse me. If you guys want to talk, can you go out in the hallway, please? Yeah, yeah, it's all right, just, if you want to talk, you take her out in the hallway, please, thank you. So, I guess the discussion on the Beaver Bay Road is, I think, my belief is, is they were looking for the county to try and come up with some money to fill that void, and so, um, I guess you can digest on that a little bit, I guess if anybody has any comments to make about it, we got a couple minutes.
So, what, they want, they wanted us to come up with the money if they're paying us?
Essentially, which, uh, to me, uh, I think you're just rewarding the few people that don't want to participate in fixing the road, that they, they either don't think it needs to get fixed, or they don't think they should pay for it, which isn't fair to the other.
Well, I think, we're, we're just the holders of the money, we're not, we're not, we're not the.
Right.
Given you the, we gotta give to you.
Right, well, and I, I don't think it's fair that a few of these landowners, you know, property owners decide that they don't want to pay, and then for then some reason the county chips in to take for their share, that's not right. I think what Rob and these guys is doing is, is exactly what we've been asking them to do for years, it looks like they're doing a great job, they've got a lot of participation. I would say well over half of the landowners, and the few other ones, you know, I don't see, I mean, they're asking six hundred and fifty dollars per property owner, that's, pretty reasonable, it's pretty reasonable to get. I think that was a great idea, what they've done, I totally support it, but I, I think they need to, they need to just continue to come up with the money there.
Yeah.
That's my opinion on that, and they hired a contractor, they got an estimate, I think everything above is free, so. So, we should just consider that motion, or consider that, you should take it care, I don't think we need to make a motion, however.
No, we're not even.
Consider taking care of, or?
Yeah, I don't think we should.
They gotta take care of them.
Yeah. I think we just stick to the idea we came up with in the beginning then, okay? Well, Jeff, we'll take you right now. You're up. No, that's all right.
You just asked me a question that I didn't understand.
Yeah, that's fine.
I want to be taken on the housing authority.
Okay.
I don't mind being on it, but, uh, there's a pretty good chance that by, uh, winter, I won't be around here any.
Okay, so you're basically resigning from the housing authority board, okay? Well, we will have to find someone to appoint to, uh, replace him. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, if you want to explain how many meetings we have, then we'll establish a scale.
There, uh, we need like once for, they have a meeting down at the Grub.
So, about four times a year?
Yeah, about three, four times a year.
Weather dependent, I'm sure, okay?
Yeah, yeah, weather.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's pretty easy, meeting. They paid for lunch.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Jeff. We got a few more minutes here, I guess, so we can, um, I guess we can open the discussion on the public nuisance part, on the old and unfinished business, so, uh, that's Kevin Evans, Evanson Property on the south side of Linton. I did talk to Tony Nagle, and he said he just doesn't have the time or the manpower to do it, so. Because I, he had come and done some, he stopped by the shop to do our garbage, and I just said, hey, Joe ever get a hold of you, and he said, yeah, and then he said he went and looked at it, and it's just, he won't get it done in a timeline that we probably want, and he's just so busy, he just said he'd rather turn it down than keep dragging it out, so.
There are some companies in Bismarck that do that kind of thing, um, you know, I didn't really bother trying to get a hold of them in March or April, uh, just because there's so much snow out there, I didn't think we'd really get a quote, but, I don't know if that's what you guys want to try to do.
I think we're gonna have to, because our, our, our road crew had done it historically in the long-term past, but we don't have the time, and, uh, probably not even the proper equipment really with it, so I'd say you're just gonna have to contract it out with.
So, so, we have to give notice again, or what's the other?
I don't think so, I think that process, that ship's already sailed.
They have a judgment, um, you know, there could be some argument if you don't effectuate the judgment within a certain time period, but, you know, it's, it's not really clear settled law, I know I talked to a little city attorney in Fargo, because they do that a lot. Um, she said typically, they, they try to do it within six months, and if it's been greater than that, um, for, for sure, if it's greater than a year since your judgment, they'll, um, petition for, uh, a new judgment. So, but I, I think we're good on this, because, you know, it's been less than a year, I couldn't tell you the exact date, I'd have to look back at the file, but if, if it has been longer than that, then I guess we'll just have to open it back up.
Well, I mean, that's fine, because I'd say if anything, just from my own experience, it seems like the property's gotten worse rather than better, so I don't think of getting a judgment and getting that. I, if the process needs to go through that again, I don't think anything's gonna change, because if anything, it's gotten worse, so, uh.
You know, I guess he's been moving some stuff back behind, uh, that old one tower too.
Well.
When we got the first judgment, um, you know, when we filed the paperwork served in, yeah, there were truckloads that were being moved out to different spots, there's, uh, um, that old hotel there. Uh, he also put a truckload in somebody's garage in town, I was told, so. There's stuff getting moved around, you know, try to get rid of it a little bit at a time, but eventually it just kind of comes back and recollects.
And I think you just have to kind of stick to this property and go from there, and then see where it is, so. Well, I, I would say, uh, explore getting someone out of, you know, out of the air, whatever contractor, that, like you said, if you got a couple of names from somebody on Bismarck or something like that, I'd say pursue it that way.
Is this something you want to have ordered if we find, you know, or is this something you want brought back next month with the quote amount and then a motion and all?
Well, the only thing with the quote amount, I guess it's all going on the landlord, property owner's bill, so I mean, I guess as long as you can get somebody, I don't know if cost is really an issue to us, I think. I mean, it's not, it's a matter of getting someone really at this point, so.
At this point, getting it done.
Just get it cleaned up.
I, I, I guess, I mean, if you found someone that was willing to do it, I mean, should we make the motion to give you the authority to hire them and just go from there? That way, I mean, that way we don't have to drag it out to another meeting and another meet, I mean.
I think so, just because it could be a fairly, uh, big expenditure, I know in the past, I think, uh, you'd have been assessed with a ten thousand, something around that number.
Yeah.
And that, I think, was for, it might have been for county even.
Yes.
Just so that you're just adding your man-hours and stuff like that, so.
Right.
You know, you have disposal fees, we don't have, I mean, Linton does have a dump, I, a dump site, I don't know if they'll allow them to use it, so they might be hauling it back up to Bismarck. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna charge, but if we have a motion and it's approved, then I think I feel a little better about it.
So, how does that, how does that work as far as, um, I mean, I know we have tractors out there, will they just take everything, or how do they do that?
Well, that's actually more up to probably Lana with the, Custer Health, I mean, as far as bringing the property into what she considers non-condemnable, or whatever you would call it, I mean.
Yeah, but who goes out there and says what's gonna go?
Well, it's kind of up to you guys, I think, in some respect, because the judge issued the judgment to the, to Emmons County. You know, not to any health organization or anything like that, so.
Right, but we're contracting through Custer essentially to handle this for us too, though, that's the only, that's where I'm getting at, like, not to pass the buck, but.
No, I'd wash our hands, if I'm like, you know.
Well, I'm not saying wash our hands, but I mean, she's the one that's been kind of our expert in the sense of is the property even condemned or not, you know what I'm saying, that.
She, she did take a look, um, and, and said that she felt that was a nuisance property, wrote a letter, I mean, I drafted, I did all the work, and the sheriff's department took photographs, and did their little, um, their, their parts too. So, I, I don't know that she's done much other than just, she took some, she looked at the roadside and drafted that letter, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, that way we had a couple of things to support our, our complaint and affidavit.
Well, I know, that must have been about three, four years ago, when I think we all went out there.
Yeah, we were all.
I don't think you two were on yet, I think that would have been Alex and Leonard did, but we went out there.
We went out there.
But that was, Kevin cleaned it up himself.
Right.
And he actually did a pretty good job, and we got to the point where like, okay, this isn't really a nuisance anymore, but it only lasted about two years, and then it kept that long, and then it returned to its former glory. So, I mean, I'm fine with the commissioners handling it too, I don't want to try and pass the buck on the land, I'm just trying to understand the agreement where if she already fulfilled her duties, that's fine, then I guess if you hire someone, then we'll have to go out as a group or a small committee and at least agree that some of this stuff's gotta go, because I don't know if Kevin really has any recourse at this point, does he hardly, I mean, I don't think he gets to sit there and nitpick.
Well, no, I mean, the judgment, I don't think so either, I mean, you have to kind of read the language in the judgment, try to determine what qualifies. I believe, you know, it's pretty broad, basically, any, you know, most of the equipment would probably qualify.
I mean, I don't want to be mean about it, but at the same time, if you're gonna let Kevin stand there and decide what stays and what goes, you'll never, I mean, you'll be there for a year and you'll, you'll get one dumpster of stuff.
That's what we did, that's what we did last time, I remember that.
Well, I know, and I mean, we worked with him, and it worked great.
Well, he said he needed this little two by four for this, he needed that for that.
Right, and he at least stacked it up and cleaned it last time, but now it's, it's as bad as it's ever been, so I, I think I think now the process would probably have to be is that you'd have to seek out some contractors, see if you can find somebody, and if you can, bring them in. And then from that point, if they want guidance, then we'll have to give them some guidance, a couple of us or somebody's gonna have to go out there, right with the sheriff.
That's why I didn't know if we give a heads up, because they didn't get any kind of warning or any kind of notice, or they just come one day and start going out.
And served with summons, complaint, affidavit, all the letters of support, motion for default judgment, proposed order, proposed findings, he got served with all those things, judge issued the judgment, he got served with that, I served with a notice of entry judgment. I don't know how many other service notices you can get, but at this point, you know, he'll probably, will probably end up getting an administrative warrant too, just to make sure that the contractor doesn't have any issues accessing the property. And so he'll get served with that as well, but if you guys want to reach out to him or something, let him know what's happening or it's imminent, you know, maybe move some of his other stuff somewhere else for a little bit, move it back later.
Well, I would say the proper thing right now to do is probably for the commissioners to make a motion to give State's Attorney the authority to hire a contractor to come in. And then from there, we'll probably get a date, some kind of estimated time when they're gonna come, and then I guess if we want to call Kevin and tell him, hey, they're coming in two weeks, you've got two weeks and they're we're coming in, no more questions asked, then that's gonna probably be to warn him, I think that's probably reasonable. So I would say, since Joe is kind of on top of it, understands the proceedings, I guess I would just like to see us give him the authority to hire somebody.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Beverly makes the motion to, uh, uh, give permission to the State's Attorney to hire a contractor to come in and clean the property of eight zero eight zero Highway eighty-three South in Linton. Commissioner Terry Second's in my discussion. Not hearing any-
Like, like you said, as far as time load, as far as giving notice, I didn't know if that's would be something I want to do, but like you said, they'll probably just move it all out and bring it back.
Well, I don't disagree, I don't think, it's, it's hard to even give them any notice right now, and we don't know if someone might not be coming for two months yet. And they might be coming in two weeks, I think the proper thing is to get someone hired, and then from there, when they give us a timeline, if we want to be courteous and tell them that hey, we have someone hired, they're coming nine AM, the eighteen, or whatever, that's your limit, and, and then from there, he's gonna, he's either gonna have to petition out of it somehow, or it's just gonna happen, one way or the other, so. Uh, we have a motion in a second, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We should settle. We've got about five more minutes until Pam is up, so the one thing discussed was we talked about fences from snow removal. I did get a couple of people I called that said some corner posts and things like that have gotten gotten wrecked from snow removal, from the dozer work and the snow cats and the graders, just, it was a tough winter. I know I had kind of mentioned it to Skylar once, and the discussion that we had was I think if anything got damaged that's outside of thirty-three feet, there's maybe something we could, you know, try to submit some pictures, have Skylar look at it. You know, see if we wanted to, you know, replace some posts or some wire, try and help out a little bit, if it's inside of the right of way, then I think we kind of had some authority to basically wreck it, so if it's at twenty-five feet or something, that really wasn't our fault, because we're allowed to thirty-three feet, so. That's kind of the discussion we had had, it was brief, but I know there's probably gonna be some casualties from some of the snow removal and uh-
Well, you're gonna get snow pushed back, you're gonna get snow broken across, where you push it back.
So I, I-
I don't know whether they pushed it, or is it just nature that created that additional snow on top of these fences, you know?
Well, I think, I, I guess my opinion and what I've heard from some of the folks is that T-posts and wires is one thing, it's the corner posts and the H-braces that are just hard to replace labor wise, money wise, so if we did go a little out of our way and wreck the corner post or something like that, the, I mean, I guess my opinion was at least maybe offer some replacement posts, I mean, you're not gonna go out and fix the fence, but, you know, and it's not gonna be very, I don't think there's gonna be a lot, there's only probably a few, and so I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but if we went out of our way, broke a few corner posts or something like that, maybe we should try and help out, but if it was at twenty-five feet or something, then well, that fence probably should have got moved anyway, so. I don't know, I guess that's just my opinion on it, and this-
Surely we're gonna put Skylar up there and take a look at this?
Well, I think the big thing would be if there were any complaints, one thing is maybe some pictures, the other thing would be to have Skylar go out and look at it and just take some measurements, and it's like, yeah, we probably shouldn't have, or this is kind of our bad. You know, maybe submit an order to replace a few corner posts or something, I, I don't really think it's gonna be a big deal, I, I got, I think, two complaints on it all, all winter, not even at the same time, so. And I don't know about the whole fence there, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know, that looked like that was kind of, did you look at it?
I looked at it, that's right, there were reform sheriffs, sanitary, by Malawine, just the east and south.
Okay.
My Gerard Chua, going south on my side.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a few, I didn't know, I didn't talk to you, I talked to Joe, there's a couple of steel posts from chain link fences that got pushed into the west. I don't know, I'm sure they're bent, or maybe they were just pushed in on the loose ground where it was soft, that a guy could pull them back, and there's a pipe across the top that holds that chain link fence, that can be put together and bolted back together. I don't think any wires ruined.
Well, I don't think any, I don't think they hit it, it looks like just the snow pushed it down or something, my-
The snow pushed it back on the, on that east side. It's not a big thing. I think I or two other guys can go over there and possibly pull them two posts back and straighten it out. And if they're bent, pull them out and replace the two posts, no big deal. And keep peace.
Well, I mean, like you said, there's, there's gonna be some casualties from moving that much snow, and that's where, I mean, I don't know if this is one of them situations, but kind of just under the understanding of, especially if it's outside of the right of way, and you can kind of prove like, yeah, it was definitely a machine that wrecked it, well, then the fence was far enough off the right of way, and I mean, like you said, buying a few corner posts and making peace probably isn't the last thing in the world. If it's inside the right of way, whether that fence should have been there, then I think that kind of alleviates us a bit while I throw it down, I think, so.
They made a point that a cemetery, no matter if it's in the right of way or not.
Oh, a cemetery, yeah.
It's a different ballgame.
I agree, and I think a cemetery, I guess go out and judge for yourselves, I mean, if you think it got wrecked, or what it would take to kind of fix it, like you said, cemeteries are kind of like parks, it's a kind of responsibility to keep, help out, I mean-
I know, I know, Nick hit that one down in Westfield there one time, but he hit the post and knocked it off, well, Tony went out and fixed it out.
Fixed it, so, I don't know, I guess you want to take a look at it, get some directions from these guys and check it out, see what you think. And just kind of evaluate it and go from there.
It's not that bad, Skylar's got the posts.
Well, I guess check it out, and same with, if anybody does call in with fences, I guess like we talked about, go take some measurements, see what you think, if it looked like something, it's kind of our fault, maybe start taking a tally, see if we can help out some way, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but see what you think.
I mean, I was saying, I have material, I can sell those tons of-
Okay, Material's on the record, he's donating materials, so.
Not, not, no two thousand, yeah.
Don't eat minutes when it's on a microphone, so.
Yeah, you know, I don't want a thousand people coming to me, yeah.
Okay, um, well, Damon didn't come in to talk about CPR or A D D stuff, so if he does come in, we'll just, we can entertain-
Name you a call down there.
Yeah, we can entertain it later in the meeting or something, so, okay, so Pam Binder. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Okay, did everybody get my attachments, was, mom was saying you sent those out?
Yeah, I got them.
Does anybody need companies, I think everybody, looks like they have gotten this. Okay. I was asked by Commissioner Mantram, Sheriff Sanders, and Marla Sodder, the whole, whole house, to put together a pay grade step structure. Similar to what some other counties use. I think one example was Burley County's pay grade step structure. And the reason why you just can't plot in Burley County's pay grade step structure is because Burley County's a second largest county in the state of North Dakota, and the percentages are different. And it just wouldn't work for Emmens County, it wouldn't work for your budget. And we have three hundred and fifty employees, we have a detention center, we have a lot of other positions, so having twenty pay grades is too much for a rural county. So I basically started from scratch, and went through some of the minutes on what raises were given prior by Emmens County, and I developed a pay step structure for Emmens County. Now, each pay step has, or each pay grade, and there are there are twelve pay grades. And within each pay grade, there are eighteen pay steps. I thought eighteen was a good broad scale for pay steps, so they don't reach the maximum to plus. What happens when you reach the maximum on a pay grade step structure is you no longer get increases, you don't go to the next grade unless your position is reclassified, you just don't get any increase until a cost of living is given. And I should step back, because a pay step structure is not a merit plan. It's not, oh, you did great this year, you get two percent, you did alright this year, you get one percent, everybody moves a step.
So when you hit the twelve, you just get the cost of living?
When you hit the eighteen step, well, you would get.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on your pay grade, he has going down, the one through twelve are pay grades, that's where you put the different positions in based on their level of responsibilities. And then each one, and only new employees with no experience start at step one. I know in where I'm at now, we bring them in at five, and for State's Attorneys, we bring them in at knocking, so that gets them to the top faster. And that's where we get pay compression issues. So we want to bring people in no, no more than step one, or step five, usually step one unless they don't, unless they have experience, they go to step five. Commission, with Commissioner approval, they can go up to whichever step they need to. But remember, once they've reached that step eighteen, they're done, and those positions reclassified. And when you award a pay step, they're awarding a two percent increase, because between each of these steps, there's two percent. Each of these grades, one through twelve, it varies in the percentage between the grades, with the lower grades having a lesser percentage, like a four percent, and the higher grades, between like an eight and nine, have a six and then eight percent, so we don't get pay compression.
So what you're saying is each step is, step is about two percent, but then when you award to the next grade, then it's a, it's a bigger, so like
Yes.
From a grade seven, step eighteen, to a grade eight, step one, is a bigger increase than if you were just going one step?
Yes.
Like, since you are only going technically one step, but you're going into the next grade, so it's a bigger increase?
Each grade is a, is a bigger step than two percent.
Sure.
From one to two, it starts off like a four percent, three, go, three, four go to a four percent, five and six go up to like a six percent, seven, eight, or more of an eight percent. Then you get nine, ten, and eleven, that's a nine percent, and eleven and twelve's like a ten percent.
And any, any department can go through grade one through twelve and step one through eighteen?
Yes.
Right, so you can, so that's where like your forty-yeared employee is probably gonna be in the very high grades?
Well, it depends on what they're doing.
Uh, but, but my point is, is what I'm getting at is like, you can have any employee at any department reach any greater step?
If the commission still should.
Right.
How it's usually done is it depends on your responsibility. Your responsibility is your State's Attorney, your sheriff has the highest responsibilities, they're North Dakota Central Code. They also have the highest authorities in every county. So those are the top, those are on the top tier.
Right.
And then as the positions, position levels go down with the auditor, and then you get to your deputies, to your secretaries, to your assistants, and so on. Those get in the different grades. That doesn't mean that if you feel that they're not at the right grade, you can put them in a grade higher. It's kind of hard to, this wasn't the hardest part, creating the pay step wasn't the hardest part, the hardest part is putting people into pay grades. Because all I had to work with is titles and pay data. Even with job descriptions, it gets dicey, you almost have to have some type of a classification plan, which you guys don't have. So I'm putting people in based on North Dakota Association of Counties data, for these different positions across all counties, and also there's a federal federal database, I know some of us, some of you might be too young, but some of us are old enough to know that when we were in high school, there was a newspaper that would come out that had jobs in it, and you could take that newspaper and be, okay, what do you want to be, do you want to be a lawyer, do you want to be a a manager, and it would have all those job listings in it, and salaries, that is actually online now, that's called Onet or Onet, and it's a federal database. And it gives every job you ever want, brings them into job families, and then it gives you the tasks and general duties, general tasks, what the knowledge scales and abilities are, so I was using that data against that Association of Counties data, it also gives us market data from Bismarck to North Dakota to the United States. So on the end, those blue columns on the second sheet, where I was trying to plot people in to that IRD, that's the data I was using, the salary data that matched. And also using the descriptions off of the Association of Counties salary surveys, and just their general data as well.
So your draft that you submitted to us has, has nothing to do with job performance, it, it's all just the-
Not a merit system.
Right, so, so that we're clear with everybody is that it's literally just the name, their ti, their title that you were given, whatever that is, and the salary that matched it versus your databases?
And the general, general duties that a physician would have with that title. So if, if someone's not in the right, I mean, I, I received an email from State's Attorney Anasim, stating about Amy. I didn't know Amy was doing legal assistance to paralegal work. That makes it different, so I received it late, sorry, I was at another commission meeting last night. So, we have to look at hers, also Marla sent me Craig's, and he's a Philly superintendent, and he works forty hours a week. So that one has to be looked at again too.
Well, and that, I mean, just to kind of cut through some of the conversation, the reason why, especially in the beginning when we first brought you on, why I asked you to do that is because I would like some expertise to get us to a point, and then we need to make sure that we can make it fit for Emmens County, but that we make it fit somewhere where it's transferable, year to year, that's why like the stepping grade is so important, because I don't want it to just be like one percent, three percent, two percent, but, like you said, you go, okay, everybody's in this department might be going up one step, or, or, and at least it's consistent. Every commissioner from here on out, every department head from here on out has something to at least base their, you know, because their merit system is gonna be a part of all this, and that, but it needs to have consistency, so I think what you brought forward is awesome, and-
And I did bring instructions on how it's generally used, but the tool is yours, it's not mine, and I'm not the expert on it, you guys know your jobs. So you would want, if someone were bringing a reclassification request, the commission could hear that and approve it, and put them into a different step, or pay grade if they wanted to.
Well, and that's where I think the big part now is to, is to is to take the ball from you now, and for our department heads to look it over, and find, like you said, like what Joe did, what Marla did, other departments find out where there's some weaknesses, things that maybe could be adjusted, and then from there, we have a conversation if we're gonna make those adjustments with the steps and things like that. You know, instead of, I mean, not expecting all that pressure to be just thrown on you for somebody who doesn't work here every day, and doesn't understand everybody's positions and titles, and so that's where the responsibility's gonna fall on us, but I want it to fall inside of your blueprint, or your work here, that way it's consistent, year to year. That way it's consistent year to year, so we're not running the train off the tracks all the time, each department trying to be on their own, so.
So if it's not a merit thing, how do you do it? If somebody's doing a really good job, would you move up a few steps or why do you do that?
That's some of the issues that have come up in other counties that have used it. It's not a merit system.
Yeah, I know, but it's
So you're basically, it's a step. So regardless of how they do, they get a step. I have issues with that either way. That doesn't mean that you couldn't put some type of a merit on top of it, but the counties that I've worked with have just done the step, and then they do a cost of living. And even if someone is at the maximum step, they get the cost of living. That's the one thing you need to be aware of, is you're giving away your merit increases. You're getting into a step.
Well, the only argument I would make is I don't know if Emmett's County's really had a very good merit system to begin with. So you could argue that this is still better, though, because, I mean, there's, I mean, that's what we've been trying to do the last couple of years, is trying to rectify some of these positions that have probably gotten left behind anyway. So I don't, I don't know if we're really a good system that we're abandoning right now anyway.
But you've got two guys that are at the same pay scale or whatever, but one guy does a really a lot better job. I mean, he's not going, he's not going to get any more benefit.
Well, I think that's where, correct me if I'm wrong, though, like when we do like a 3% raise, we did it for everybody. That's a cost of living increase. I mean, that's, we're agreeing that that is, the step, I would almost argue, is kind of like a merit system because that's your, that's your promotion, your increase, your, and that's where you can look at two different guys and go, we're going to do 1 and 1/2, 2% across the board, this person's also going to get a step. I think that's how you, I mean
And yeah, in general, how it has worked is if anybody's had disciplinary actions, which means they're not performing to the others, they don't get the step, they just get the cost of living.
But then, so then when you do a cost of living, though, does every step increase then? Like you almost have to redo the whole sheet then, right? That's how that?
Yeah. That's why I sent the Excel spreadsheet, because on that first corner, that very first salary, you have a formula, and when you increase that formula, you add a percentage to that, it increases all the rest of them.
Right.
So your cost of living automatically goes into this step structure.
Right. But that's where, I mean, I mean, am I wrong in stating that, though? Like if you have, like you said, two individuals, one is in the scenario where you want to promote them, the cost of living will update the entire sheet. Everybody gets the 3%.
Yes.
But then if you put someone in the next step, they get the, they get the increased percentage because this step 11 is higher than step 10. So they are getting basically a bigger increase, which would in fact be their promotion? Is that a fair way to put it?
It would be their merit, so to speak, because they did meet the memo level.
So it's a merit-ish system?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, because you get what I'm saying, like that's where, that's where you dictate your promotions for whatever reason that your department head wants to do, that 10-year performance, that, you know, I mean, if Skylar or Gary or some of these guys come in and just go, this person just, I would like them to get more, they're doing more, they're coming in extra, whatever, then that's how you just go, okay, we're going to maybe move them a step where the other two or three in the department might not see that or whatever. Well, the reason I say that is that becomes a department thing, though. I think rather than the commissioners picking, choosing who they think is doing good, the departments need to handle that, and how they want to run their department is how they want to do it, you know? I mean, that's how I feel like it should be in a lot of ways, because the commissioner's making a decision, and two departments being happy and two being unhappy doesn't make any sense because we don't run their individual departments, too. We don't know exactly what's going on like they do. So that's why I feel like the step and grade thing makes a lot of sense, because they basically give us their recommendations on the step and grades.
That can turn into a budget system, okay?
Generally, if they, if you do a pay step, generally the commission approves a pay step and approves for everybody except for anybody that's got disciplinary issues. So everybody moves to the next pay step.
So everybody moves a pay step if there's no disciplinary actions, but if one is doing better than the other one, then what?
They move a pay step.
So basically, it comes down to what the department heads, what they request then?
Well, yeah, I guess I would argue that it's probably not any different than anything else, that department heads are going to come in, their budget is going to probably coincide with their steps, and then I think we would either agree or this, they're either asking too much.
Which step they should do.
Well, that's kind of what they're doing now anyway, to a point. Each individual budget's coming in with, you know, if they want a certain percentage, or some of them wait to decide what we want. Well, some are happy and some aren't, where if it's a part of their budget, they're including their steps and their grades, then we can kind of look at their budget that way and decide if they're asking too much or not enough. I mean, the bottom line is the decisions have to come from Emmett's County. The expectation that Pam's going to do all of this, or Pam's going to help us, right, I mean, she's going to help us with the spreadsheet questions and the templates, but this deal is going to be between the commissioners, the employees, the department heads, that's how it's going to be. But at least we have a format to work out, but we need to keep that format. That's, that was my big point.
Right.
None of the numbers on this sheet, in my mind, I'm not even looking at right now. I want the department heads to look at them. If that's fair or if that's properly done, great. If not, bring them to us, and if we have questions, we can go to Pam on, hey, is this the proper way to do it, go into a step or a different grade or whatever? But we have to stick to the steps and the grades and probably even upgrade our job descriptions so that correlates better to the steps and the grades. That way we're refining a process that is repeatable and disputable, instead of just going, okay, this department is unhappy, so we're going to give them more or less. But that's not, that's the way we've done it for years, and it's obviously not.
The problem is whenever someone started, they started with the same average pay. So there was pay compression already, trying to figure out who goes where, because even lesser physicians started the same amount as other physicians. So there's starting to pay compression. It's hard to get out of that. It takes time to work out of that and into the actual pay steps or pay grades where people should be. I would encourage the department heads to look at Onet on the internet and look up job descriptions for their people and themselves, because it will give them guidance on duties and how to write the job descriptions as well.
Okay. Any more questions for Pam?
Honey, I do want to make a comment. I commend Pam for coming up with this because I think it is extremely needed for the county to have some structure in that, in so many ways. It needs to, different positions with different titles, different responsibilities need to be classified in a grade. We've needed that for decades. And then you've got the step increases. Keep in mind that, yes, this needs a little tweaking on the local side with the department heads and the commissioners to making sure that certain positions, whether their, what their duties are, what their responsibilities are, are in the appropriate grade, but also with the step increases, 1 through 18, right? You might have an employee at a grade 5, step 7, they may not increase to a step 8 in two or three years. They get a cost of living, if you grant a cost of living, but their step, you know, where they're at might, may remain the same. But if you have that employee that's gone above and beyond, they're taking on additional duties, maybe that warrants not only the cost of living, but an additional step increase. So you're not necessarily going to get an automatic step increase each and every year. That's, that's not the intent of this at all. But it gives you that tool to work with, to put that employee where they need to be based on their job description, their responsibility, their authority. You can add that work performance into it. Again, like Pam said, if you have an employee that is not doing so well and you have to take disciplinary action, they may not get a step increase when the entire county got a step increase, or everybody else in that agency got a step increase. They're not going to get that because of poor work performance. They may get the cost of living, but they're not going to get that step increase. So there's different ways that we can use that tool in so many different ways to help better kind of define our pay scale and our structure and stuff. Because I've been here 29 years, and it's always been pay everybody the same regardless of responsibilities and stuff, and it just, it just doesn't work. And I can tell you right now, trying to hire somebody has been just a task that I'm not enjoying. Six months, I'm going to have a hard time filling one position, let alone maybe two positions possibly. Skylar's probably in the same situation with the road department. Without some type of pay structure in place and potential employees ask you how it's all set up, you have nothing to tell anybody at this point. So this really helps that process.
Well, I think the nice part of NORT, too, is it gives the department heads and the employees, if you can look at this step and you can see those hourly rates or whatever, and you know, like, that's where you need to be, then that's what you can at least request. Because otherwise, before, it's like, is 3% enough? Is 5% enough? Is this $22 an hour, right? And what do you go from there, where at least you have something, where you can, what are we going to do? Well, this person, like Pam had mentioned, the ideal candidate would come in at a grade 7, step 4. So that's what we're going to have the top end of the wage be, and then the other one. And then you at least have this consistency of where you're hiring, where, and you can pick these spots where you think you're going to start people or try to, or at least you know where the person leaving was at, and you can compare it to something. Like, that's, to me, what's been so hard as commissioners, trying to evaluate, I mean, okay, we're bringing the person in what the last person was getting paid, or the last person was probably underpaid, and the new market is asking for more money than that tenured person was getting. And that's Emmett's County's fault for not being active enough over the years to try and create something. So that's, that's where my consistency wants comes from, and I feel like the input needs to come a lot from the department heads. And then the commissioners obviously will compare it to a budget and how things are going, but at the same time, you guys evaluating your own employees is going to be the best-case scenario, and from there, we make some fine tuning or something, but I
Yeah, I do have a potential road department employee that applies, and they come to the table with 10 years' experience, five years of heavy equipment operation, they own, they have a CDL. Is it fair to start them at the bottom of the poll, grade 5 or 6, step 1? No, you'd probably get them up to step 4 right away because they have that experience, that knowledge, they have that CDL, you can start them out at step 4, step 1.
All I would say is that Sheriff Sanders, you made good points on the pay step structure and how to use it, but department heads be consistent and have procedures written down. So we don't have one doing something, another department head doing something else, and then we get into a departmental labor situation.
Well, it's going to take, I mean, this is totally brand new to Emmett's County, so I would say tread carefully in the beginning, and with Pam's instruction and, you know, like with the instructions she's already left us, and some consistency, we can probably make it work very well, but just, and like you said, we need to just be consistent.
Yeah, and need some written guidelines.
What she did submit, such digital, yeah, so how to, you know, like you said, how
to use that pay structure. Again, you know, is 10 years longevity with the county worth an additional step increase? Some counties, I don't guarantee I'm wrong, but at five years, you know, longevity, you get a step increase. At 10 years or 15 years, you get another step increase. That's worth something, that knowledge of somebody being an employee so long, you can't replace that experience in any department. So longevity at a certain point could be a step increase.
And that's up to you. I would just write it down. I usually do that word document with procedures and policies, just add to that, change it, just so there's something there.
Right. Well, like you said, I think the big thing, too, is with the department heads getting involved and wanting to make recommendations towards a policy, like not just going, well, I like this, and don't like, but let's create our policy, and we can have, you know, that's what we have Pam for, is going, hey, here's our policy now, and you can see some of the pitfalls, pro or negative, and you think it's a good system, too, or, I mean, it just, let's create a policy, use this as our pay grade, and stay consistent year in, year out, and I think it's going to be a very valuable tool to us. Any other questions?
I have a question. I'm hearing two different things, and I'm confused on it. My understanding was that your job X is grade 7, that's how it is. And you come in, if you come in with experience, you come in at a different step, and you go up from there. But that position X never changes grade unless it's done by the commissioners to change that position. Is that correct?
Unless the department head was in the reclassification for some reason.
It would be, the only way you would change grade is if your position is reclassified.
Yes, you wouldn't go, you wouldn't start as an employee as a grade 1 and stay 20 years of service, now you're in grade 11. Once you're at the top of that grade, you don't move unless you're down to your
But the grade doesn't change with the position unless it's a reclassified position, okay?
That's how we've worked it. I mean, that's
Yeah, your grade is tied to your job title, your job description, your authority, all that other stuff. What do you do and what position do you hold? Your step increases are based on everything from, again
Performance to merit to years.
However the county wants to do that, yeah.
Right, but you would actually argue that the grade is probably, step 1 through 18 is probably the high and low of the average market? That's kind of what the
Your in, market, and max.
Right, so your grade is already in kind of a classified-type job. So like you said, if you took on another duty, did something that reclassified your position, and then you would merit an increase of pay outside of the grade, then you would go to the next grade, like if you already maxed out in that grade, say, which
That's up to you.
Right, but I'm just saying for understanding, like the purpose, the intent of it is like someone's here for 40 years and they meet, like the end of their grade, then they take on another duty, and that's where you go, okay, now you've merited a grade change because your job went from
Now we're vast, and it's a grade change.
Yes, you were X, now you're X plus 1. So now that that grade puts you into another pay range, and then that's where the 1 through 18 is your movement within your pay range, essentially. And that's all tied into like your market valuations, your job descriptions, and so on. So the grade is difficult to move unless, like you said, you really change a job or
Unless there's reclassification in your job.
That makes sense, so, okay.
Is that, are we breaking a law if we move them a grade without reclassifying their job description? Are we breaking a law?
Depends on what's your policy. You're not breaking any departmental labor laws unless you're moving one employee and keeping one, unless you're moving one employee that you really like, you want to move to another grade, and one employee that you're not so hot on stays at the other grade, and they improve it, then you're breaking a law. But it's very hard to
See, that's what I was talking about.
Prove that, but you've got to be consistent and fair.
I think that's what I was
Based on job
I think the argument on having people in different grades is that you're maybe, unless there's a job description that correlates it to it, you're probably vastly overpaying someone that has the same job description. That's essentially the, so once you move to, say, from a, like in Skylar's department, a equipment operator versus, say, a foreman or supervisor, if you have equipment operators in different grades, you are probably, most likely vastly overpaying one versus the other for the same job duty.
Yes, that'll be a pay step to core, for the experience.
And so that's where the grade change within a department is usually a responsibility role from a, from employee to supervisory type role. So that's, I mean, it's a Cliff Notes version, obviously, but that's kind of the long and short of it, so if you're going to have different grades within a department, they better have different job descriptions. And they better be very different job descriptions. But I mean, to apply, it's got to be like someone's almost doing something
There has to be variation, enough variation to make it
Right.
Be different job.
Exactly.
So the steps would actually be the pay grades? I mean, like, let's say me and you both got the same qualification, class, you know, and one guy's just, he's more ambitious than I am, way more ambitious, but he, well, he should deserve more money, right? So you give him a couple steps up. So I can't come and discriminate, yeah, you're discriminating against me, I got the same classifications as him. Can they do that? I mean
Well, like you said, either, I mean, we're starting to ask infinite questions here about things we don't know. But yes, you're going to probably have different employees in the same department at different steps based on a variety of different things. That's kind of like what Kathy's question was. You have five people in an apartment, they could all five be at five different steps for five different reasons. 10-year, you know, different responsibilities, but yet not enough to change a job description, you might merit a step. But, you know, I mean, it's going to be, they're probably going to be very close. You're going to have most folks within a couple steps of each other, other than maybe the first guy starting in the department versus the last guy. But everybody in the middle that's within five years and is doing the same type roles, they're going to be getting almost the same money. I mean, it's going to be within probably a step.
What gets you into trouble is say you have a female equipment operator and a male equipment operator, and who knows if one was doing more work than the other? For some reason, the male has two steps, and is above that, and he started the same man, same qualifications. For some reason, the male has two steps and is above that and they start the same, they have the same qualifications. There you have discrimination, potential discrimination, there you could be breaking a law.
Did you just assign gender in twenty twenty-three? How dare you?
I did.
This, this step program, it is a good thing, but it also gets very confusing. And it is, we're talking about that fourth under one at one time. It, it creates a lot of animosity in the group of workers, I'll give you that.
I, right, but as I would contend with the merit discussion earlier, I don't think there's any lack of animosity in the current pay structure of Emmens County anyways.
No, I understand.
Right, I understand what you're saying because.
And we had talked about this in the department head meeting.
I think so.
This is set in stone, like what's this.
Right, and I think, I think that's the important thing to remember at the same time. Pam has given us the guidelines, she's given us the proper way to conduct it. But inside of that, there is, I mean, Emmens County, we have an opportunity to form this. Like, we're not gonna totally just reinvent it, but at the same time, policies for things like merit are, there are things that we are going to have to adjust. The department heads are gonna be leaned on heavily for it. You get guideline, you get input from your employees, how you guys feeling, think things are ran. You guys are gonna have to match that with your needs in your department and recruitability, you know, keeping folks, bringing new folks in. You feel like it's underpaid, whatever, then those are some of the adjustments you have to make. Reminder that you can't just bring along one or two, you need to be consistent within your department. Where you wanna start people, where you wanna maintain certain people, and then where you're doing maybe, you know, some classifications that are similar, but different type roles, that's where you're trying to create some difference, some separation with your steps. But just remain consistent, don't just go, well, this one guy's just doing so much better, the rest of them is maybe five steps ahead of everybody. You're gonna have to have a hard time explaining that, that's the only difference. Now, if you wanna bring two or three along in groups based on tenure and stuff, that's a little more understandable. And try and create some separation there. So this sheet that she's given us, whatever hourly rate or salary she has tied to your name has nothing to do with you. That's just the, the base data that Pam received and it might not be correct. So take it, evaluate it amongst yourselves, bring in corrections. And also at the same time, work on some consistent job descriptions so that way we can reward those people that you feel are maybe being shorted. Make sure you're putting in their responsibilities. And then that is almost like a position that needs to be promoted into or replaced when those people leave. This person does this, they get paid this, they're leaving or they're moving up. The next person is going into that position, let's stay consistent with it, let's move it forward with it. And I think, I think we can, we can build something off this. Within reason, so.
I do have one thing, one other thing. I know Sharon Schremschaw is here and that you sign a resolution on House Bill ten forty, the Endy Purpose Plan, and also Senate Bill twenty-two thirty-nine. House Bill ten forty passed and was signed into law by Governor Burgum on April twenty-ninth. That means that effective January first, twenty twenty-five, there will be no new entries into the main first pension plan. Instead, it's gonna be a defined contribution plan. This is gonna significantly affect recruiting. It has no effect on people that are already in the first plan, but only those entering in effective January first, twenty twenty-five. So you're gonna have to look at your budgets for twenty twenty-five and kind of do some strategic planning around retirement benefits. I just thought I'd pass that along, thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming in Pam, appreciate it, thank you, thank you for everything you do for us, sure do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Fisher, Emily.
Let's real quick, so we're entering, not really entering, our conferences are on the rise. We go back for the year, I guess is the best way to put it. And we both would like to attend a national conference. And so registration may happen to the summer, but we just thought it would be good to come at the same time. Personally. Yep, so my conference, my national conference that I would like to attend will be August twelfth through seventeen. And so be about mid-August, it'll be in the one, it's for my National Agriculture County Agents Association. And so it'll be the first time I've gotten to attend this national conference in any capacity. I've attended some four-H national conferences virtually in the past. This is kind of my first go around with the National Engagers Association. And so that's the dates of my conference and I'm not sure quite yet. They do offer pre-conference tours, which would be a couple of days prior to that. But the conference itself is from the twelfth to the seventeenth.
And mine is the four-H national conference in Pittsburgh actually this year and it's October ninth through thirteenth. So basically what we're asking is approval from our county to travel out of state and use money within our travel budgets that we've already, we're not asking for additional money, just what we already have allotted for. We will get some money through some professional development funds to the state and whatnot. But yeah, just follow in policy, get in your approval before we start making hotel reservations, registering. So I guess that's what we need. There's certainly good questions, but.
Donnie gives a thumbs, thumbs up, that sounds like it's pretty good, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, I gave a thumbs up on the record.
Right.
Request approved.
Thanks, thanks.
Way to take the lead on that, Don, nice job. I think we kind of handled everything in old and unfinished business. So, yeah, Skylar, we can take you early if you want.
Yeah, we can, if you wanna do, Ken.
Well, that's, it's under your agenda thing, if you want, Ken will come first.
Yeah, you can just go first and then, or what, change on the seats.
Yep. Hi, Ken.
Hi, I've got some handouts here if you'd like to ask everybody. I'm, for you guys don't know me, I'm Ken Wolbum up Braddock. I got, I own the land where the gravel pit where you just had crushed. And I'm also the road that you guys are really contemplating and looking at, putting a new bridge, new crossing in there. Really wanna thank you guys for that, been fighting that road for seventy years, sixty-seven, ever since it was made into an official crossing. And there's been lots and lots and lots of money stuck into there, it's been washed away. And hopefully this time you guys are able to make a good decision to kind of change the channel and change the road and kind of do away. But anyway, get what I'm here for, the handouts. Basically what I'm here is I'm just asking you permission for me to put some kind of a stabilizer, some kind of a dust control around that curve by my yard. Cause yeah, especially now that you've got that huge big pile there, there's gonna be many thousands of trucks going through there throughout the periods of years. So I'm just asking permission to be able to try to put something to control the dust around my curve. Cause there are days when you cannot see in our yard. You get just a little bit of a south wind coming and I'll say, you guys' trucks it ain't, you guys' trucks it's our trucks. It's the county's trucks, I mean, hey, there's nothing you can do about it. But I would like permission to try to control that. Now, I talked to Skylar about this material. I wasn't able to get the SDA sheet when I first talked to Skylar. I just came a couple, just Tuesday, I got the SDA sheet, made copies, gave you that too. I'm disappointed in seeing the SDA sheet in this product. So whether I would choose to use this product, I've also got information on a bunch of other products. The reason I live with this company is I've done some investigation booking in my yard itself and my little driveway going into the garage. I've been fighting with that for fifty years since I've been married. And I, this company made a product that I'm using on my, I gotta tear it up and mix that in. And supposedly it's gonna hard it down, the water's gonna quit and it's gonna be done. It's not this, it's a product that the same company you made. So while I was connecting to them, I had them, I picked up about a gallon of this that is called the dust suppressor, can be mixed up to ten to one and put on to control dust. I agree with Skylar, I'm not a hundred percent sold on the chloride business. And I was disappointed when I finally got the MSD deal that it is magnesium chloride and another chloride that it's made. So, but magnesium chloride is what Burley County uses. Burley County hires the contractor to come out and goes to all their roads and they put on magnesium chloride. I'm not a hundred percent impressed with that because by a road that's right on the south border of Emmens, Burley County, right? Pretty much Burley's. And I go by that farm a lot. It's a liar, it used to be Joey Liar, it's Bob and Lou Gard Liar's Farm. And yeah, it's super good, but when it gets really wet and like this winter, the snow melting, snow melting, it was still there and it's not that it got slippery, but it didn't, I, I would have preferred like something better. But I'm, maybe they put it on, they, Burley County puts their product on at a quart to a square yard. And then they do that application twice a year. So maybe you wouldn't have put it on that much. What I'm asking is if I can just put something to control this, this could be mixed in your directions there, could be mixed up to a hundred to one, or ten to one, I'm sorry, up to ten to one. So if I was to put on, just mix this into ten gallons and spray it on and see what happens. And if I'm not getting a good supply, and I'd like, what I, what I'm asking you guys, you've got enough headaches, so. Donnie, I'm not asking you to start a new project of trying to keep the dust from every single yard that's close to the road. I'm asking for permission to, Skylar and I to kind of work something out to keep the dust from my yard. You gotta, every time you start another project, then you're asking more money, then you're asking more budget, then you're asking more. I understand that a hundred percent. But if we start doing this on one farm, then you're also gonna get farmers saying, yeah, but Wolbum gets to do this and that and what it is. So the proposition that I would throw out to you guys, I'll put this on, I'll cover my time, I'll cover the expense of the product, I'll cover everything, I'll try to work with Skylar, find a product that we can use. But I also know that I'm living in a yard, that there's times when you cannot see the garden, whatever. We've been fighting with it for years and finally I, I come up here, I should have been sitting in here when you guys were talking the road work. Well, if you've got faith in you, confidence in you, I hope that this time road's gonna be done. I've been driving around Emmens County my whole life and I've been quite disappointed in a lot of bridges that were put in and still the jump that's been put down in our, big deal, none of you guys were on the board. So anyway.
Well, Skylar.
I'll end with what, last thing I'll end. What I'm looking at is I make a proposition for you, this, this product, and oh, while I was on the magnesium, I, I have contacted, but the majority of them are all using that magnesium chloride. And right here, magnesium chloride reaction, safety data, magnesium chloride stability, stable. Incompatibility, none. Hazardous decomposition and byproducts, none. Hazardous polymerization will not occur, that's not on that. That, that is the safety sheet of magnesium chloride. That's just the sheet of magnesium chloride. And this product, brown and blue, uses a combination. The problem with all of them is they won't give you the exact percentage of the magnesium chloride that's right there on your information, exact percentage not given for protection of their magnesium chloride. They got, what is it, ten to forty percent?
Fifteen to forty-five for calcium chloride and ten to thirty for magnesium chloride. They're giving you a range so that when.
They give you a range, every single place I got it gives me a range. Of course, there's another product here that is made up with paraffin resins, water, hydro soluble, anionic surfactant and non-ionic surfactant. Problem with them, I haven't gotten around, I haven't, they haven't gotten back to me yet. This is Penn Suppress with a price. This here was twenty-five dollars a gallon. So for two hundred bucks, I know that I can put on plenty. So what I'm looking, like I said, I'm taking your time, I'm looking for permission to do something with, with Skylar. And since I'd be willing to do it, put a little bit on. If it gets dusty, I'll put a little more on, I won't get old, so that I'm working with you. And another thing, this here product, non-corrosive, hundred percent, you put it in a sprayer, you walk according to their sales pitch. Like I gave you, non-corrosive, hundred percent, whatever, you put it into your sprayer, you spray it on, you wash your sprayer out, it's over with. Okay, I would be willing, if you was to say that do something like this, the county, the weed board has a pickup with a sprayer. They won't be spraying weeds, well, within two or three weeks, the way the season's going. But I would be willing to, if, use their sprayer and spend my time. If I look at contact, there can't be more than a hundred farms close to the county. I'd use my time, I'd use the sprayer, if the farmer was willing to pay for the product to wet the road down by, around each individual place. I'm guessing, like I said, there can't be more than a hundred farms, two, three days, I would hit every place. If Skylar contacted farmers, they wanted it done, they'd have to buy their product or furnish the product. I'd furnish my, for this year, I'd furnish my time if I could use the weed board spray. But that's here and there, I was looking mainly my farm, something.
This is asking a lot of areas, I do what to say, do you?
Right, well, Skylar, do you have an issue with him basically doing like a small sample run there?
I don't think I'd have an issue with him doing a small sample. I mean, a lot of the stuff, the, the roads have to be like loosened up, then watered and then that's.
This, this you just put right on.
It says here, it says no, no mixing with the soil and no compaction required.
Yeah, this, it just.
Sounds pretty good, to be true, too good, too good to be true, but I.
Sounds like a sales pitch.
No, I guess in my mind, you know, Ken seeking permission to just try something to make his yard a little better. I don't have a real problem with it, I like the fact that he's asking because it's not like, well, we're letting Wolbum do it, well, we're testing it. And if it's something that would work, maybe we explore it down the road. I think if he's willing to incur the costs on his own and we get to kind of check it out.
Yeah, I don't have a lot. I'm putting in my yard there, I'm, for a non-lasting, long-lasting, I gotta score it up to two or three inches. For a real lasting, long-lasting product, I gotta, I was supposed to score five or six inches. Stir it around, work it, work it, pack it three inches, work it, work it, pack it three inches. Well, I've got twenty gallons of that stuff setting in my yard for my, I'm gonna, but my yard, I've cemented it twice, I've blast halted it twice, I, this is mine.
Yeah, right.
But this here, I was, when I was looking at them stuff for the yard, 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 and this here, so okay, five gallon right away to show to you guys, mix it up to ten to one, I'll take a little hand spray and go up. And if, when we start hauling gravel, it gets bad, I'll talk Skylar and we'll try, I mean, we'll work around. The way it is right now, there's days you can't see in the yard.
Well, I think, I think if this is the case, I think agree on a certain stretch you're gonna do, you know? You know, not that we just get carried away or we don't, you know, five hundred feet on each side of the drive, whatever, I don't, you know, and maybe pop a stake or two in so you know where it's being applied, so that way we can kind of watch it and see if there's a big difference, you know?
Yeah, cause you're, initially you're just gonna do a little hand spray or do a little.
Well, yeah, I do a little step one, yeah.
So you're not gonna be five hundred feet.
No.
Okay, so you're just basically doing another.
And this hasn't been sold good enough that I wouldn't worry about putting in my sprayer. Well, within a couple of weeks, I'm gonna be pulling in my sprayer to do later spurt spray. I go into it, ten, fifteen gallons of water, I dump it in, then I just spray it on the curb, spray it on the curb.
So you're just talking about just doing the entry like to your driveway, basically?
Yeah, well, it's just a curb, just a. Yeah, well, it's just a curb, just a curb around there, I'm not looking at.
I don't have an issue with it, if he wants to spend his own way to do it, his own devil.
I'm not gonna, I'm not asking you.
Right, and that's, I, I have no problem with it, I just wanted to make sure not that we're given permission, that, cause I know mag chloride and stuff, there, it's, there's mixed reviews. Cause I know even when I worked at the coal mine, we had to do it, cause when we moved on the north side of Highway two hundred, we had an issue, cause we're on the north side. We were creating a dust issue with Highway two hundred. They mag chloride it, everybody gave it this shining approval for about a month. And then after that, it got hard to maintain, it got greasy when it got wet. It was hard to get back into shape because it hardened hard when it was dry, it was, it was, it was difficult. So that's where, that's the reason why when it's been brought up in the past too. I mean, even when Francis was here, even when, everybody was like, I don't know if that's the best, so.
I was, I got one of their general advertisements. Well, I talked to Skyler last fall and we agreed, I don't like, but I got, okay, I got their advertisement, I went and bought this stuff. And then I asked for the MSDS sheet. They didn't send it right away, they sent the MSDS sheet later, which is the second sheet I gave you. And as I'm looking through there, I looked at, while we were gone last week, left Minnesota, I mean, dude, I come back home. Here I got it in the mail and I read it to Conny last night and we got home and I said, never mind what I said.
Cause I didn't.
This was I read. But this here, other stuff that is, isn't chlorid, isn't paraffin. And I'll do more checking and stuff, who knows, if this is a hundred dollars a gallon, well.
Right, cause I know, I know Marvin Wolf had brought it up.
And I know there's a product, soybean, that's using soybean carrier.
They make a hemp one too, I know Marvin Wolf brought up that they make a hemp oil or some kinda hemp treatment that.
I haven't gotten that information and I'd be, yeah, before I put along, I'm, put in the next week, I'm gonna come watch you do more stuff and rather than bother new guys, I can.
Well, I think coordinate with Skyler and you guys, if, I, there's no issues with the road department, I, I, I don't have an issue with it, I would say give it a try.
I wanna make a statement, Skyler, you guys, with this here, is it detrimental to your vegetation along the ditch?
It's not supposed to be, that's, that's where I.
Cause if I got a tractor tire break and I had chloride years ago. And it ran, I mean, it was gone for years.
But was that regular chloride from the tractor tire?
For weight, which, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Calcium chloride is what they put in tractor tires, is calcium.
What about my water streams, are they okay?
This is magnesium chloride.
I know.
And, um, and we're far enough away from the creek, we're way up in the yard, I'm half mile from the creek. And no, I don't want my grass killed either.
I'm just bringing that up. I know soy oil was king, they created.
I don't believe it, it would be harmful because other counties are using magnesium chloride and, I mean, it's pretty well known. I do have a pretty good in with an environmental engineer, so I could probably talk to her, let, let her look at it.
That I, that I do know, that, that one road going there, it's Darrell Low Beach and then about three, four more miles, it's the Liar Farm. Well, the Liar Farm, I drive by like once a month. And that grass, they've been doing it for years. And that grass, it hasn't bothered at all. I know David Bungard here has approached the both years and years and years and years, cause they're right on the main brad road. And, but he wasn't making the proposition that I'm making. He was always wanting the county to do something, wanting the county to do something, like, you've got enough money to spend, you don't need to start another brand new project. Once you start another project, all that does is blossom, blossom, blossom. I, no, it's my tactic. I, whatever, I don't want you to start another project. While I got you guys here, I do wanna say, I, I, um, do surveying for USDA NAS. Which is, I bother other farmers, I'm a retired farmer, going out and bothering other farmers, doing surveys. So I've driven random gravel roads all over the state. Evans County roads are not the best in the state, or not the worst in the state is what I should say, but they're not quite the absolute best in the state. But they're good, I mean, so, I, I thought maybe there'd be people here, but it's definitely reported, anybody can see it. That's why I wanted to get down on the record to let everybody in Evans County know. Our roads could use improvement, but our roads could definitely be a whole lot worse. I know the guys are beating their heads against the wall, I know the roads, you're trying, you do what you can. And in that line, this was a tough winter, guys were out bucking snow, bucking snow, bucking snow. And me being me, Conny and I, you and us, anybody that's ever worked around our place, we give them tokens of our appreciation, whether it's some cookies or pies or whatever. We give them tokens of our appreciation. It's okay, we give the, all the guys, you can do truck drives, whatever, and so our maintainer up here. Well, a month ago, a couple of weeks ago, I had this much of a joke, or I mean, I kinda complained, but it was this much of a joke. I kinda stepped on our maintainer operator's foot up there, so I'm gonna stay right here and probably, I apologize to him. I did a hundred times over the phone, but I want it down the phone.
Yeah, well, nobody was in a joking mood at the end of March, beginning of April, so nothing like that.
So anyway, when the, when the dark, when it reached and sees this snow and this, you know, it's falling down, sorry.
I'm sure he's over it, but, Ken, just, I just wanted to say, thanks for working with us on the gravel, we appreciate it. That was a big help to the county and it's, it's been a pleasure working with you, so we really do appreciate you working with us.
And if you and Skyler were to sit down and talk, if you stumble on some block, that would be like this paraffin stuff or that soybean stuff. If I stumble on price that's halfway as old, that product, I would still be willing to, for a one to two year, you could, I'd still be willing, going in and dying if you could have the heat system, the pressure pickup. Because it could be more than two or three days to hit every farm in Evans County, I don't know how many there are.
Well, let's, let's see if we can work something out with this and then if this works, then it's a couple of.
And then I say, well, there's ours, there's Francis', there's San Bungarder's, there's Torrey Mott's. Whoa, wait a minute, we just went five miles in that phone.
Thanks, Ken, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, good luck to you. Thanks, Skyler. Well, I'll be in touch soon, or you said you wanted to talk about the last song?
Well, after the meeting, we can talk, or. I should be done by noon.
By noon, okay. And then, give me, you got my number, give me a call when you, if you don't wait for me. Okay.
Hey, thanks, Ken.
Is there one extra? Yeah, no, it's probably for me. I accidentally got the.
So this one-way speed plow, this thing is similar to me, like, but the highway department uses on their plow department, essentially?
Yeah, alright, someone got one with the, the quotes on it, that. Sorry, well, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we want to start with this, I just wanted to get a hand note, I'm sure Ken can start with it. I want to, please. Um, yeah, these are kinda like, they're speed plows, they're, uh, there's two different brands here, we've got two different quote forms. One's a Brand, one's a Capitalize, that's what the two, essentially the same thing, I believe Capitalize is, uh, got a few more features to it. Uh, they're designed to, for obviously snow, uh, taking it off the ground faster. The reason I bring this forward now is, these are out, about twenty-four weeks. So if we order now, we get them by the first part of next year. Right? So, we just have to like, I guess essentially pre-approve spending this money for next year's budget. And the way the manufacturers go, and that's what you have to do now, because it's taken so long. Before it used to be six weeks and then you could get them, now it's almost, as, well, Capitalize says, delivery approximately December to January. So that's if you order, they're taking orders now, cause they build them during the summertime. France is roughly the same, same, uh, timeframe.
What's the value with the one-way speed plow, is that for like lower snow amounts and?
Uh, I've talked to a few different counties, uh, that have them and different contractors that have them. Yeah, it's for the little bit lighter snow, but they also use it during heavy snow in places their V plows. I mean, you're never gonna replace a V plow, cause when you get those really bad drips blowing in. But also then when you're, with a V plow, when you're plowing one, they're kinda like, you can only use it one way, right? You bust through the drift and then you, if you do it again, then you throw snow on your, your clean side of the road, right?
Sure.
These are essentially, and these are designed for faster speeds. And with the tires on there, you're, the theory behind it, I guess, and from the other contractors and counties, um, is saving gravel. Cause you can set your, the tires are riding on there, you're not, we're in skids out and stuff like that, you can pitch them, roll them a little different.
But I mean, this, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, when we have them light, like two inch snows.
Oh, these are, these are shiny. These would probably shine even at four, four to six inches, even if the wind, I mean, when the wind didn't blow.
Cause I mean, the trouble you have now is you get that light snow with no wind and you're going out there with a V plow, it's, it's like trying to butter bread with a chainsaw. I mean, you're kinda, I mean, it's kinda overkill for, I mean, where, like something like this, you could probably go at a higher rate of speed, better visibility, just like it's saying.
Correct, and that's, I mean, we're still plowing snow and, like, they've plowed snow for years. I mean, a few of these counties have moved to them over the last couple of years. The salesman of Capitalize actually gave me a list of counties, there's four in North Dakota and two or three in South Dakota that are using them, that's in his territory or whatever. So, um, Capitalize price, now remember that that's with getting it to our shop and installing it. They're thirty-five thousand dollars apiece.
But this is hydraulic too and everything, right?
Yeah, it's hydraulic.
It's not just a blade, I mean, it's.
No, it's hydraulically driven, you can angle it, there's a twelve percent.
Right.
There's actually, if you go on to Capitalize, let's say, there's a pretty good video of them actually showing what they do.
But I mean, it's, it's a full-on hydraulic attack.
Yeah, it's, it's full-on, like, it's, what they'd say back in the old days, the bee's knees.
Is there a lot of retro fitting to a grader or like, I mean, brand specific, doesn't really matter?
Nope, actually, they just needed to know what pair lift we use, like a front lift group, so I actually sent them pictures out. They just hook on kinda like, essentially just like a V plow, except for now you have.
Couple hydraulic.
Couple lock lines in the front and then, uh, they, there's electrical wiring that has to be done, but that's.
For a controller.
Yeah, pretty minimal.
So would you, if, you know, looking at it, would you, I don't need what you need, you wouldn't need it for all of them?
No, right now I'm, I'm looking just to buy two, purchase two, so the total price would be, would have been, there's seventy thousand for Capitalize and sixty-two, three hundred for the brands. I believe that Capitalize's got a few more features that'd be beneficial and, cause you can kinda see on the brochures how the different, Brand's brochure, I just had to get off, let's say, Capitalize. Cause Brand, we actually went through our, 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 not directly. Capitalize manufacturing, Canada, they, uh, they deal directly, so. No, I would not wanna purchase, uh, all eight of them right now. Yeah, if we went with, started with two, so you have two different things on there. I know some counties have purchased like six or seven over the years, so they just kinda build their fleet slowly, right? So.
One, I guess one, just, just a question or frame of reference, I don't have any, but would, would you see the benefit of almost having a similar type setup on like a, like a tandem axle dump truck or something? Like a plow truck, like we had maybe talked about before?
Um, the only time I've ever seen them use them on like one ways like this is on asphalt. We don't really have, a lot of, I know, some counties use tandems with V plows on to plow their snow on some of their gravel roads. Then talking to their mechanics, they, they're not a fan of them because it just takes all that sand and just destroys the undercarriage of your trucks. Like a sandblaster, and then I've talked to a couple of different counties where they go out and do them with V plows and then a couple of days later, they gotta come back with the blade and tune them up. So, I'm not totally against only the dump truck.
Well, the one thing we had talked about before was a tandem axle dump truck. Especially if you could have like a removable sander, cause we had talked, we do have some pavement that we don't do really any sanding help on, one. Two, a tandem axle dump truck would probably be very valuable for a lot of smaller covert jobs, when it's hard to turn around. And it also would help, if you rented medium-sized equipment, you're either pulling it with a semi or a pickup, or there's always that middle ground where if you wanted to rent a really big skid loader or a small excavator, you could pull it with the dump truck, have a load of gravel, like, see the versatility and have one, and then if you also had it set up with, you know, at least one plow, so that way you could have a non-grader operator that you could either bring in or someone out of the department who's not a typical grade operator to get in a truck. And at least help out, maybe plow the asphalt at least with it. And, you know, not, not saying that you couldn't do this and that, but I also just, I feel like a good tandem axle, but like a state-type truck, like a, a second, second-tier truck that they're, you know, phasing out of their fleet that we could pick up, I think would be a pretty versatile year-round piece of equipment too.
Oh, that's actually, I didn't interrupt it.
Oh, I did. But I think that's where, you know, something to consider too in the future too. Oh, I don't know, I haven't looked for a while, but I mean, if you get a decent one, I'm sure you're probably spending what this plow is worth or more. You're probably spending thirty, forty thousand on a decent truck, cause they got controllers with them, they got, you know, I mean, there's.
There's actually a state auction coming up in June, they haven't, um, it's not, one website says it's coming up, then one says it's not, but, so we're gonna look at, we believe there's a few trucks coming up on that state auction, so.
I think if you.
We're gonna look into that also.
I mean, not, not trying to say one thing or another on this, but just, since we're talking about like a one-way plow, not to mention the other uses for a tandem axle dump truck.
We've been looking, it's just the market's pretty strong for used equipment right now.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be tough, especially a good one, a good one's gonna be tough to find. How about the surplus, do they have any surplus there?
No, we, we check every once in a while, but no, it's, they're, they even say it's tough to get stuff, so.
Your best bet would probably be the state.
So we're open to the state auction, there's a few trucks on it. And then that, or you find them out in New York and, you either, you know, you find them a long ways away, so. So I guess that's just, I don't know if we wanna go down that route, if we do, I just, the faster we approve it or get on the list, then the faster they build them. Like I said, Capitalize actually told me that, uh, if they built it and let's say it showed up in October, they would push the payment till the next year, or the next budget cycle, so. That's your thought, and we can revisit it at the, towards the end if you want, or you guys don't wanna make a decision now, or. I know it's tough asking for like money now when we're going into budgets, so.
Well, I mean.
Well, would it be part of this budget or next year?
Be next year's budget, so we just.
Be next year's budget then?
What I guess I'm asking for is if you, if you say yes to it, just remember when the new equipment budget comes out, you've already pre-approved this much money to be spent.
I'd like to see you get a, I'd like to see you maybe just get one of these and we try it out and use that other thirty to forty K to try and bring in a truck.
Okay.
I, I'd see the value in that, and then if this works out, and you know that one works out, then maybe go buy two the next year or something, you got three and then a truck and I, I can tell you one thing, I, I'm all in favor of improving the snow removal capabilities of our county, that, I mean, I mean, obviously a winter like that doesn't come around all the time, but it's gonna come again. And, uh, and that's where I, I feel like this too, there's times where if you could quick pull the V plow up, put this thing on and just hit two, three inches of snow when we had some of them issues. Or go around and tune up some spots where you're not, like you said, pulling snow onto a clean spot. This is a tool where you could really be, I, I like it, I think it's a great idea, and it's good to think it outside the box, so I. This is a tool where you could really be, I, I like it. I think it's a great idea and it's good to take it outside the box, so I. I wouldn't have a problem with you getting one and trying to use some of that other money to get a good truck. I mean, even if you had to spend an extra five or ten grand more than you wanted to get a good truck, I think a, a good truck would be valuable to that. That's how I feel now.
I think they were, you know, we were talking about that before a long time ago.
Right.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's where, cause you're probably gonna have to reach a little bit to get a really, I mean, to get a nice truck, but I'd rather you guys brought in a nice truck.
Yeah.
So those that the state has, are those single axles or tandems?
Uh, I think, oh, they have a variety, but most of them I believe now are tandem axles.
I think almost all, they've, they've kinda phased the single axle out. I mean, like you said, they probably have a few, but yeah, you're, you're most likely gonna get a tandem axle, automatic, Allison Auto. And they usually almost always come with the controllers, maybe not always the plow. Uh, and some of them, cause I've looked at them options, some you can get with a sander, some they take them off. I think it depends on the condition, so.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, so that, I guess if you, you wanna approve one then, is that where consensus, so.
Yeah.
Uh, Capitalize then would be thirty-five thousand for theirs, you know, and then uh the Brand one would be thirty-one, one fifty, so.
Which is the better builder?
I believe, I guess I haven't looked at a Brand up in person, but just looking kinda at the photos, I've looked at a Capital I in person and saw it. I, and the counties that I've talked to run Capitalize, I would probably go for the Capital I for thirty-eight hundred dollars, I think.
Right, for that close of a price, I would go with familiarity on the first one of this. You get a Capital I and you hate it, then maybe you look at something else, but. If everybody's running it and you've seen it yourself, that's probably the best one to go with that case. If it was ten, fifteen thousand dollar difference, it'd be different, but.
Exactly. So you approved one then?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would say we're on the record with one that I think we can find.
So hold us, put it in that, the new equipment budget.
Yeah, just, yeah, make sure when you do your budget, remind us that we're already committed to one, but I, I think it'd be good to try one out.
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then same with the truck.
Yep, sure will.
And then I, I guess we're kind of in agreeance. I'd say pursue a truck if you can, if you find one you like.
We're still looking.
Okay.
Okay, and then uh, back in January, we did vacation time extensions. Remember we extended their vacation time until June first?
Yeah.
Well, we've had, like, they were gonna take April off, a lot of them were gonna take some time off in April, well, that didn't happen, so. Do we want to extend it out again now to just the end of the year? I mean, we're talking probably twelve, throwing out like twelve days. You know, we're just extending out last year, and I extended out, you know, what they've accrued from January first, obviously. Just from last year, stuff like that, because a lot of them said, if they're not gonna do it, or they're just gonna take the time.
Well, the trouble.
And now's not the time to do it.
Wait, no, no.
So, what, July, August?
Well, I, I think, I think Skylar, I think we just go to the end of the year and they can sort out a couple of days each month and just break off a couple of Fridays here and there, because yeah, we need to, we need to be blading our roads now.
You know the roads need to be bladed, people are calling.
Well, and we're shorthanded too right now, because we had a couple of guys miss for some personal stuff and now we, we're already one guy short, so yeah, we're. And then crack sealing took a couple of guys up for a few days trying to get the asphalt tuned up for the year, so which is pretty well done, I think, or.
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that here.
Okay, but yeah, I, I guess, I guess I would entertain a motion that we just extend the vacation till the end of the year, because we just.
I'll make a motion on that, extend it to the end of the year.
Okay.
I would second that.
So we have a motion in a second to extend this use to the end of the year, because yeah, we, we can't afford to have guys taken off now or in that. A, a month from now, once things are hopefully sorted out a little better, we can start squeezing some guys out of here, but yeah, right now it's tough, so. And June's, yeah, June's not far away, so. We have a motion in a second, so any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
If you lose it, starts December thirty-first.
So uh, yeah, asphalt, we did finish our crack sealing, we are uh, we got the north stuff done off by Bradock. Kintyre, the one in by Hazleton, and then the one north of town here, and then the one by our shop.
Golf course road there, yeah.
Um, now we are out of crack sealing oil and it doesn't sound like we're able to get any from anybody. The state's, they changed some policies, so they're not giving it up right now. They're hoping maybe later they could, but by that time it might be too late. Contacted a few other places, they're not really giving it up. One of them said he didn't even know if the plant had fired up to where they could get more, so that's gonna be our uphill battle.
Even what, west of Strasburg and the Langley's Bay Road?
And those, they had Irish plant, right? That was getting bad as a federal.
Yeah, there's some that's getting bad, yep, but those were all done last year, like the ball west of the Langley.
Oh, okay, so.
So we just, that's why we moved up there, we're just trying to alternate, alternate them the best we can.
Yeah, if you're gonna be short oil, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's uh what we come up with, because last year we didn't do Kintyre and stuff like that, because of, it's getting gypsy and stuff like that, so. And then we're out of the world, that was there down there. We are looking into doing our own tank like we talked about, waiting to get some prices on concrete and moving three-phase power.
Yeah.
Over to a lot. It's not far from a lot, it's just turn over what we want for the tank and then.
Yeah, it'll be right across the road.
Yeah, yeah, but it depends where we.
You're kinda, you're kinda working on the verbal commitment that you got the cities participating us to a little bit, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, I will, I'm sure like there would be, cause they're not the same thing, but we are. Some I know, previously, some of the smaller counties, like our neighboring counties, you know, they struggle with it too sometimes. The tank we're gonna put up will, more than do ours and probably the cities, uh, it's the smallest one we can get. But uh, we probably have some actually less big.
Well, the state actually has, they, they use single-phase power with four-eighty, but three-phase would be, you know, more efficient, yeah.
Yeah, and ours, like you said, right in the, right in the crossing.
And it's not that.
Just getting a price from them to, to move it over there, what it would cost us, and then with these tanks. I mean, it'd look just like the one that's out at the state shop. You gotta put it on concrete footings and stuff, yeah, so. But just the, the tank alone is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Maybe we should just tear all the asphalt up in the car.
Man, I, I get it, and it's.
That's just unreal, isn't it? Well, I, I would say the likelihood, or we're gonna maintain the asphalt we have. If anything, increase it over the future rather than decrease it, because I think once you've had pavement, it's hard to go back, so.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's.
Well, the big, I mean, so the big thing about it is though is that. I know we had talked about the county taking on the project, so we don't have like shareholders all wanting to be like. But is there gonna be like a cost share in the sense that like they're gonna at least be purchasing? Like the cities are gonna purchase their share, are they gonna purchase from us or something, or? Somewhere where we can kinda recoup some of them costs back, because I don't, I don't think it's. Like, I'm not looking to gouge anybody, but I don't think the cities and all there should be able to like purchase it at cost, when we're putting that kind of an investment on, like that.
Yeah, we have to increase it a little.
We probably have to mark it up a little bit just to at least cover our costs on some of it over time, because that's a pretty. I mean, so you're looking at, it's probably only two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to set up a.
Well, I hope not quite that much, I mean.
Well, but I mean, by the time you move power, you purchase all the other little bit of stuff, I mean, any project, rule of thumb, you might as well add twenty percent. So if you think you're gonna spend a hundred and fifty, you might as well figure you're spending one-seventy-five plus, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, yeah, you know how it goes.
Yep.
You buy a tank, something goes up in price, you need a different component you thought you had, I mean, that's just how it goes, so.
Yep, so yeah, I mean, just. Probably ten years ago, we could have bought a tank for a lot cheaper, so just.
Yeah, well. So Dan and I were talking about earlier, we should have paved a lot more of these roads twenty years ago, it would have been a lot cheaper now, but you know. Like the Cattail Road and some of the federal aid roads, probably should have got paved thirty years ago, would have been. Your life would have probably been a little simpler on some of that. It seemed expensive then, but now it's really expensive.
Yeah, and if you look at your price per mile to pave now, and this is pretty cheap to buy and make something out and maintain it, you know. I mean, ma- asphalt's expensive to maintain, it's just, that's what it is, so. I mean, that's not, we're not, I'm not asking for anything right now, it's just, you guys.
Right, but I mean, we, we've arrived at that, we've talked about several times, if we're gonna run out of emulsion every year, our, our, our crack sealing. We're gonna lose our asphalt.
We'll lose it.
And so we either need to pay to maintain it, or we need to tear it out, one or the other, and once you tear it out, you're never gonna get back.
Yeah, really don't wanna tear it up.
No, so I guess that's where we're at, so I guess proceed forward, let us know what happens.
Okay. Uh, so. I was contacted by a Todd, Mr. Todd Gloss on eighty-seventh street, Iowa six oh seven, I believe, eighty-seventh street southeast. He states that it used to be on the maintenance map, was taken off years ago, well before mine or the previous one. The address he gave me, he says, it's one of the first one, but it's actually a whole mile back in there. The first, I'd say roughly a half-mile is pretty, if there's gravel on it and stuff like that. Wouldn't take much to put it back on there. The other half-mile is pretty rough. It, it might have been built up at one time and stuff like that, but it was poorly done, and there's a hill there that. Wouldn't have to have a, be cut back to make a right ditch and stuff, if you wanna do it right.
There, there's gonna be a house going back there.
From what I understand.
Do you, you don't know where, like if it's part of the first part or the second part?
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't. I just got a phone call.
Okay.
Well, he lives in Bismarck, I think, right? He called too.
I asked him if he would attend the meeting and he wanted me to bring it up, and I told him I, I would. You know, this is no different than the, what is it, the Baller?
The Vogels.
With the Vogels that we did last year, you know, they asked for the same thing, we said no, they did it.
Well, I think what, I think what our, kind of our new stance has been, and something that I agreed with, is that it should get brought up to a condition where it can be maintained, and then from there we can add it to the maintenance like Vogels did. Where they gravelled it, they had someone shape it up, and then, you know, that way at least there was some investment on it, so we're not building free roads and rebuilding roads in the places where we decided we weren't gonna be maintaining roads anymore. You know, it goes hand in hand with our complaints on road conditions in the county, and you can't keep adding five or ten miles a year and expect the other roads to be getting better too, though, and not without adding to your workforce and things too, so. I feel like we've been consistent lately at least on, like, yeah, we'll, we'll add it to a school bus route and we'll maintain and gravel it from here on out, but that initial cost to get it up to a condition should be paid for, you know, by those that are asking for it now. It's really no different than encouraging specials on someone for, you know, it's just rather than going through the process, they just go, yeah, well, we'll, we'll pay what it takes to get it up to a decent condition. And then from there, then we take it over again, basically, you know, I mean. Since it is in public right-ofway, it is a section line road. It falls under our purview to maintain it, but I don't think it's fair to ask us to just constantly build new roads everywhere, because someone wants to put a house out in the middle of nowhere. Not saying this is the middle of nowhere, but it's, it's not a maintained road. They chose to build it at a place where the road isn't maintained. They should have some investment in it to make that road.
I don't, I don't think he's building a house out there. I think he just lets the Bismarck comes down for weekends and stuff like that, the way.
There is a house that's going to be going on out there. I don't know if it's like a nephew or something. A niece, nephew, something like that, because I was contacted by, by them that they were gonna be putting a house out there. I don't know the site though, because. They had just asked me for a little bit of gravel and some blading, so my assumption was it was on the first part of that. When I drove by one day, I thought, well, it's not that bad-looking road, it just. But then when you made the comment that after, that, that you go over the hill a little bit and it's, it gets pretty rugged, I'm like, well, I hope it's not all the way back there, because that's a whole nother. That first half-mile is still semi-maintained, where a load or two of gravel and maybe a couple of hours of maintenance or work, you'd have it up to snuff, and I think that's a different ask than, than a week's worth of rebuilding a road, probably adding a covert or two and totally graveling a piece of road.
Is there a power up there?
Well, that, that, we're.
I'm wondering if there's power in there, that they've got a place that's established with power. Is there water back there? When I.
Well, that's where, my, that's where my belief was, it was probably closer to eighteen oh four, because a lot of that stuff's closer to the road ditch, or at least in the neighborhood. So that's why when I was asked about it, all they did was they contacted me, they said they're gonna be uh, putting a house off of eighty-seventh there and uh, because that's the road right across from like going to Dave Bowman's, right on the, this on the east side of the highway.
Is that that class? That class has been produced?
Well, it'd be.
Quirch classes, so.
Yeah, well, the one that contacted me is married to a class, so the assumption was is that was all part of the same. But I was contacted by Todd and I had no idea where it was, but I drove by it off eighteen oh four and I thought, well, the first few hundred feet don't look bad at all. So I don't know, I'll have to contact them and see exactly where they're putting it and what they're asking for, because when they just asked for some blading and gravel, my assumption was is that was a pretty maintained-ish type road, and when I drove by it, it looked that way from the highway, but.
Well, we did blade the first roughly half-mile, like, just shy of a half-mile. We did blade that once last year.
Right, so that, that's, my assumption was is that's the part, and they're just asking for a little gravel, which that's not the end of the world, but. If it's already in a shape that we can maintain, that's one thing. If they're asking for a road that hasn't been touched in twenty-five years to get rebuilt, that's entirely different. That goes along the lines of like what we've dealt with some of these other people, and. I feel like, and Skylar mentioned it too, and I agree with them, if you've been consistent and asked those folks to do that. You really need to ask everybody from now on to go, hey, to bring this road up to a condition that we can blade and maintain, you know, safely. You're gonna have to pay to bring it up to that condition, so I'll have to check it out some more and find out if this house is.
Safe, Mr. Chair, we just found something out here.
So Blake Seltzer, or Seltzer? He's put a house on Sean's. Are you talking Todd's lot, like that old yard further east?
Off the north.
Because, I mean.
Todd, Todd contacted me, he did.
He contacted.
You're talking right off eighty oh four there, or at least a quarter mile, right?
Well, did Blake, did Blake submit a building permit?
Yes.
Yeah, we had.
Okay, and where, did, because that's the, I mean, Blake's the one that, I didn't wanna say nothing, but I didn't remember, so. He does have a building permits submitted, so.
Yeah, so right off, three eighty seven, four, three eighty seven, and he's putting up on Sean, so did Sean or come sign it?
Right, okay, I remember it now, so Sean, Sean had signed it, right, I remember that. So that's the old, that would have been Sean's dad's place.
Quirch, right?
I.
Yep, Quirch.
Todd has a lot, underneath, it looks like maybe it was an old yard.
Yeah, there's some, like a swing set, I mean, they, they upkeep that, it looks like they upkeep that spot back there.
They're out there in the summer, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever up there.
But the first, the first turn going into that, where the start is, that road is, is in reasonable shape.
Correct, that's what we laid into one time last.
And that's what Blake was just asking, that we basically start maintaining that, like, which we've been maintaining it maybe once or twice a year, and probably even ten years throwing a load of gravel on it, where I know the gravel's pretty thin when it was wet this spring, they're having a tough time getting in there, so that.
That's pretty cool.
Right, so I mean, that, that is the part that what we had talked about before, and I had mentioned it to you, that I don't think that was really a big deal to just go out there and add it to the bleeding schedule and then you put some gravel on it when they're in the area, because it's only a few miles from Cattail.
But that's not the one that Todd was talking about.
No, not eighty-seventh. That's the part of that, and like Skylar said, we've been maintaining probably a couple hundred feet past that, right? And then once we get to that point, well, it's like, well, there's no more reason to maintain it, nobody's living back there, and now that request is to maintain it, and that's where the point is, is if you're gonna ask us to do more than we've been doing for twenty-some years, you're gonna have to put some effort into it yourself, is my belief, that's. But that's a different request than what Blake was mentioning, that's the thing that I was trying to differentiate from that. So, because I think that residence where Blake has put his place was lived in within the last like.
Oh, yeah.
Ten years, right, so that's why that road was maintained, it's just once you got past there, all the ways, nobody else was living it, right? So they stopped maintaining it, because why keep going all the way back there? I mean, it's, every chance you get, you're trying to make it efficient, you know, so you can get around the roads faster, so. Well, I would say at this point, I guess, I mean.
What on a section line, can you do that? Does someone?
It would be, it'd take a lot, I think, because. The, that's where you said the sunflowers planted up to the top of the road there, right, last year, and stuff, because people couldn't see there, you remember last year, where he called?
Yeah, I don't know what.
And you went out there, I think you went out there.
People were planted inside the right-ofway and stuff, and. Well, that's what I'm saying, I, you're, you're falling into a line now where this is almost degraded itself back to a section line versus an actual county-certified road. If we're going to make it a county-certified road, I don't believe we should be having to invest that kind of money in the stuff, just because people ask for it. I, I just, that's, that's what's gotten us into a trap all these years of building road, instead of building road, or rebuilding road and maintaining what we have, we're out there adding more miles every year just because someone asked for it. That's not a very good policy. I mean, as far as in Blake's situation, I don't see any problem with adding some gravel and keep blading it, because it's been maintained for years. After that, if someone wants to improve a road, we've basically let back go, it's gonna have to have. If someone wants to improve a road, we've basically let back go, it's gonna have to have some investment from them too, because. I just don't see the value in rebuilding roads. Although we have enough roads in my mind in this county, if you can't build along a good road or something.
Yeah, that was, that was Clarence's place, he said, I think.
Right. Yep, that's, yep.
He's in the home in Bismarck.
So, yeah, I mean, that place has been recently lived in, so I don't have a problem, so. So, yeah, so at this point with Todd's deal, I don't know. I mean, unless you guys see differently, I'd say just keep it as it is and. I mean, the only scenario I can see where the county would work on it would be if he was gonna reimburse us the cost, but I don't think we even have the time to do it anyway with all their other responsibilities, so I. I don't even know if that offer's on the table, so.
So we're gonna, we're gonna. Continue to maintain and just probably put it on a more regular maintain, maintenance schedule.
Right.
The first half mile there, to the first farm step.
Right, I would say.
And then after that, we're just.
That's what we've been doing, I'd say just continue doing what you've been doing and then.
If they're moving out there, we'll just do it on a more of a.
Or just add it to you like, like your route, basically.
We'll add it to it.
Yeah, and I mean, they, I know they have children, so it's, if it isn't going to be a school bus route, it will be in the near future, so. Just something to keep in mind there too.
Okay.
That brings up another thing. Did you ever look into more of that Dave Drogowski's road or are you guys still working on that deal?
Well, I mean, we didn't have a whole lot of winter time to work on it, but um, you know, like he contacted me a few times unless. Oh, when it was, is blocked, but I know we haven't worked on it and that's. Once again, is that, do we? Did we promise them we're gonna do it or are we doing it? Are we not gonna do it?
Well, I think the first thing was to try and find an alternative that even worked, because that was the problem we were having, like you said before, when we hired a wall, there was. Multiple center lines, there was right of way issues. I mean, that's where, that's what's always been the stumbling block. So we have to find some kind of an alternative that's even feasible and then from there decide if we're gonna do something. There was some power lines and water lines to probably move, but I don't know what that.
I'll contact and we'll get working on it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. So the next big thing. Is private drives. Both winter time and summertime maintenance. The only reason we're bringing it up now in the winter time, because if they know, that gives people ample time to buy their own equipment to do that and we're giving it to them. I, I know I talked to the operators and they are, they do not wanna do it. It takes up a lot of their time. They, some of the roads aren't up to the standards and you fall off and get stuck and then you're in there for twenty minutes trying to get yourself out or half hour. Or are you waiting for another. Motor grader or something to come pull you out. So now you're pulling two pe-. Two pieces of equipment off a road, maintaining roads and. We all know that this winter was a extraordinary winter. I mean, it's, we're gonna have it again. Not saying next year we're gonna have it, but we're gonna have another one.
I think a lot of them were talking that they, they wouldn't mind, I mean, if we charge them, have a fee for that, but.
I think we just gotta make prep that people prepare, like we talked this winter when the school was all in near the people. That we just give them notice that they have to put in. That's no different than people living in town. They've gotta clean their own driveways. That's the way I look at it, you know?
Well, the thing is, yeah, if we're gonna do it, then we gotta let them know so they know.
Well, I think the big thing about it though is you do need to have some kind of a description on what a private driveway is, because we've, we've had the issues. So there needs to be a little bit of a definition, like. You know, whether or not we're gonna use public right of way as an excuse to get rid of a lot of them. But there are some that are on public right of way that basically only they use them. Well, is that a private drive or not? I mean, the. Like someone whose driveway is tenth avenue. Is that a private driveway or is that public right of way? That's what I'm, you get what I'm saying though, because there's some of them where they get in and someone's yard is literally like. Thirty-three and a half feet off of it. You know, where do you stop? Sometimes you need to turn around in their yard. Well, now you just did their thirty-three feet of private driveway, like. I'm only just playing the advocate of we need to have some kind of a description, because if you just say we're not doing private driveways. Now you have some blade guys that are going down tenth avenue and someone's arguing that's private drive, like. It needs to be, you know, public right of way. It doesn't need to have forty pages of definition, but there's gotta at least be something. It's gonna eliminate probably eighty percent of this conversation by just saying private or, uh, public right of way. Anything not on the public right of way, it's not getting done unless it's like an emergency. Deal and that emergency has to have a protocol. It's either sheriff's department. Or a road superintendent phone call and you guys deciding together, like this was an emergency, we have to do it. You know, I think that's where, and I don't even think the commissioners in a lot of ways should even have any. Argument on whether or not it's an emergency or not, because otherwise you have people calling individual commissioners. Dan didn't think it was a big deal, I didn't, but Dave and Donnie did. Now what are we doing? Now we're not even following our policy anymore. So. We need to have a just, it needs to be a short policy, so it gives you some flexibility. But there needs to be enough of a policy where you could go, this does not fit our guideline. You know what I mean? And then, then that's. Can just be a couple paragraph, one paragraph that just says it's not on public right of way. Then the other thing to do is, is defining the school bus route. And that probably needs to get worked with with the school, like. We are not going into people's yards if it's not on a public right of way. That's up to them to clean it up to. If so-and-so lives a half mile off of Ninetieth Street, they're, they're responsible for that half mile, not the county. That way you go blast there, I mean. Like Dan said, like Dan said, if somebody lives in town and. The city plow comes by and plows the street and then someone says, well, I couldn't get my school, my kid to school because my car was snowed in the driveway. Nobody's screaming at the city guy. Everybody's expected to go, well, you should have went out and shoveled it, pushed it, snowmowed it, whatever. I think, I think there's room for flexibility for ugly winters and we can make those decisions on our own, but we do have to have a certain expectation out there of what is and isn't going to be done. Because. It totally hampers our efficiency to get the stuff we do need to get done too, so. I'm not asking, I'm not asking for forty pages.
Okay.
But don't just say private drives and then we walk out of here. We all have ten different ideas of what a private drive is.
If we draft a policy, it's maybe what's a private driver then, what is, what does it need as a school?
I think that would be the proper way to go about it. And then if people go, well, what's mine? Well, this is the list of things we are or aren't going to reconsider. Okay, mine probably isn't gonna get open then, probably not. Okay, then they know. They gotta call a neighbor, they gotta get their own equipment, something.
Taking preparation.
And now's the right time to do it, because you're gonna give them the entire summer and fall for those that are. Not going to be getting the assistance they maybe are used to getting and from there.
They have to adjust and prepare.
So we're not, if the county, if they wanna hire a county to come in and open up. We're not doing that?
Well, I think the hiring, the hiring deal kinda comes with, because like you were saying, summer maintenance now.
Well, I mean, I think the first thing we should do is establish what it, what it, well, I mean.
Private drive.
Yeah.
Private drive is first and stuff.
Because if you have someone whose driveway is ninety-eight percent. Tenth Avenue. You're probably gonna have to blade it. And then if you normally went in up to their barn or back because it was easier to turn around that way. Then there needs to be some benefit, hey, it really helps us, so we're not gonna charge it. This, we don't have to go in there, so if we're doing it, they're paying for that. Whatever it is, hourly rate. And I don't, I don't mind. The hourly rate and the helping out, but it also has to be in a scenario where like. You're not going out there just because they called. You're going out there when your responsibilities are done, like. Now, if you're in the area and you know it won't take long, summer blading's a little different, because you're like, okay, I'm out here, I'm all the way out here, it's gonna take a half hour. Do it. But snow removal is another animal, because. If you leave eight miles of federal aid road open. Or closed, because you got stuck in someone's yard and now forty people are stranded versus two, that is not a good move and that's what people need to understand. It's not, because there's other people digging out to the main road and that main road ain't open because you got stuck in someone's private driveway. That, that, that North Dakota ice thing is killing us with that, especially on a bad winter. On an easier winter. You know, that, I mean.
Correct.
We can leave some of that up for discussion or whatever, but there needs to be at least a. A box.
And then you know how it be, you know, like it's a on-the-road deal. Some guys will get built, other guys won't get built. Not a good deal.
Right. I mean, you gotta have some parameters, right? So you can turn everybody down. I think that's the, and same with the summer.
I don't wanna be like that, but I can ask that guy like. And like you said, now's the time to do it.
Well, I think you could argue that that's been part of the issue. I, I'm, I'm not gonna say, oh. This road is not good or doesn't get opened on time and you're upset, but it's because we're always doing prep. That's not the case.
Yeah.
But it doesn't help. That when you calculate all the private drives, especially in the winter, you're adding probably a hundred miles of snow removal on top of it and that hurts our. We're trying to do the best we can to be a conservative, efficient group and then when you add all this work, it doesn't help our efficiency. It just doesn't, so.
Correct. Well, we will, we'll get a. Policy drafted. What we just, what the road department defines as a private drive and stuff like that, we'll bring forth the question.
Are you getting contacted about blading? Like getting hired to blade some summer stuff? Okay, because.
Nobody's contacted me yet to do many drive, private driveways or.
I, I did have one guy I told you about that. That said he would hire us to blade it just because he can't get a crown on his road.
Oh.
Like he'd want it like one time. I don't have a problem with that, as long as it works within the scheduling and then they are willing to pay for it, so that's charging for it.
Is that up off of fifty eighth? Is that the one?
No.
I got an issue though. Like even I talked to a contractor vocally, said, I'll do it. If they contact me, I'll blade that crown and keep you guys on your main roads.
That's my preach, that there's a contractor in town like he, there's probably a couple in town that have motor graders that they can contact them, but.
And they'll do it.
They'll do it.
Well, I completely agree with that too. I, I just know historically, like. And there were some people that were paying the road department, very few, but. And they wanted to continue it and it's like, well. Like I said, I would rather them call anybody. I don't wanna compete with private industry on top of that. We have enough work to do on our own, so I. I'm not in favor of hiring out, but I'm also understanding that there are times where if you can't get someone here in the area, but whatever, but. I'm also in favor of them hiring it out to other people and the county shouldn't be competing with people that have the equipment either, so. That'd be a good scenario too, is if you had a list of contractors, go, here you go. These are the three people you can call or whatever, because I, I'm in agreement with that completely.
Are you, Skylar, on a map just gonna kind of highlight what you consider private? So we could see, you know?
We can, yeah, like we can.
So there's a magic plan?
Yeah, I mean, the most roads on there, like you'll get one that's in the middle of a section. You know, that goes off, obviously that's. Not on a section line or anything like that, so that'd be, I would base that off of it. Or consider that a private drive then. And then you're right, there is some that follow the section line or up street or avenue. Right till the last little bit and then it kicks off, so. Yeah, we can, we'll bring a map forward or try to make something forward.
Well, I think, just to, just to piggyback off that though, when you have one house. That's three quarters of a mile in on a section line, even though that section line is maintained and I'm all about keeping it maintained. That doesn't make it a priority either though. Like there needs to be a little bit of a.
Yeah.
You know, like your, what you'd call your feeder roads and your main roads and then you try and go back and open those spots up. And people have to understand that, like. Just because they're driving by doesn't make it more efficient to go in and open your road too though, because. There's thirty other people hoping the road is open when they get to their mailbox, you know, I mean, right, so.
Yeah, we'll just bring that draft one and then they'll be able to dive, right? We can tweak it and change it.
I guess to sum it up, yes, we need to, we need to do a better job of managing these private roads. I think we're all in agreement with that, so. I'd say start coming up with something and we'll tweak it and, and, you know, and we'll get something that works for us.
And, uh, yeah, as of now, the, the blades are all running since we're, uh, the, the new one, I just. I'll set, I'll go out with him tomorrow and work with him, just because he's never. Bladed roads yet, but although the nap, the other ones are now out, uh, blading roads, but.
They just, they just start, because I've been given quite a few calls.
Oh, God.
Yeah, I mean, I got a few phone calls too, but I mean. One wouldn't have thought this. With all this snow, those roads are dry.
Right. They're breaking up.
We, we bladed one, uh, last week. And it's already, already bad again. And I got phone calling this morning, I was like, we just bladed it the other day. It's dry, like. Sometimes leaving them. You might have a little bump in there or something like that, but it's, it's dry. I, I. We didn't think this would happen. The ground was super dry, so it absorbed a lot of that moisture, but. Yeah, and we were expecting the roads to be sloppy, messy for. Two, three weeks. Well, I mean, two, three weeks ago, we were following snow on these roads. And over Easter, we were following snow. And some of them were pretty blocked, so.
Ninety-second street I've been called on. Take a look at that. The west end needs gravel. It's terrible from. Fifth Avenue West. Take a look at that and then look at Fifth Avenue South and darnell's slipping up. It's a swamp down there, but there's a culvert down in the bottom where there's some water setting. Take a look at that, if that could be cleaned out, that culvert, not to replace the culvert. If that culvert could be cleaned out somehow.
That was southwest, right?
On fifth, yep.
Yeah, southwest.
And ninety-second avenue.
Ninety-second street.
Oh, a street that is going east and west, that's a street, yep. Take a look at that.
Yep.
So they're, so they're all out, like down south there, Westfield area, their maintainers are going?
He went out this morning.
They went out this, everybody went out this morning, so it's just. Need time. It's gonna take them time to get through their whole route. First that's calling, right, they, they might not be there today. Might not be there in a while. It'll take a while to get that through their routes and by the time they get through them, they'll probably be rough again, so.
Like people are just, they wanna see, you know, just.
Well, there's, there's some spots, there's just even some ruts, just some ruts need to get leveled out, you know, where like, you know, people were. Pushing their own snow at the end when it was thirty-two degrees and sunny that day and the edge got soft, it just. E- even though it's dry, it's still.
Well, yeah, but that's why we're going out.
Yep.
You have to understand that it's not gonna be the cure all.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming if Gar's out, he's probably on that, like that main Braddock road first, that federal aid road, because that, that's getting pretty rough from eighty-three into Braddock. So if, I mean, if not, make sure that. I, he usually does make it a priority and if today's, they're out, I'm sure it's fine, but I did get a call on that and then, um. And then I think it's Sixtieth. Right north of Hazleton, between highway eighty-three and, I'd be, I don't know, you know where Tom Chase Farm is? North or. I wanna say that Sixtieth, because you live on Sixty-second, right? That's the federal aid road.
Sixty-fourth, sixty.
Sixty-fourth is the federal aid road? Okay, so then it's Sixty-second.
So it's, yeah, up there, okay.
Yeah, so then like Tom Vetch and then live on the west side, then on the east side of the highway that goes over to.
Seventh Avenue.
Seventh Avenue, yep. That stretch you said was just really muddy this spring. There's like no gravel on it, so. Just take a look at it. If, when you're up in that area doing some graveling or something, that probably needs some attention.
Ninety-second needs gravel, Skylar, on the west end from that fifth over. That was so beat up last fall and now it's just, it's all clay. I know you've, you did see it last fall, it was terrible. But they were hauling all that grain out of there.
But I'm sure the snow removal over and over and over didn't help our gravel situation.
We plowed snow over, I didn't.
Six months.
Over five thousand miles of just plowing snow.
Yeah.
Cattail Bay Road, guys have called in, that must be rough for them.
That's a, that's a thorn in the county side.
Well, and the Cattail Bay Road, I drove it one day. It wasn't overly bad. I was down there two weeks later and they're hauling potatoes and now it's, it's, so it's.
Good.
It's gonna need some work. That's, but that's the Cattail Bay Road. It's, it's just.
And I mean, I, I'm sure the roads are gonna start, the farmers are gonna start getting in the fields and. Not playing over, but. Every traffic that goes over and when they're dry and everything like that, or muddy. It wrecks them.
So when do you start your graveling then?
When do we start graveling? When we catch up on some other projects. We still have culvert projects from last year, we didn't get it.
Well, and when you can get into pits, because I know like Ken Wolbaum's pit's inaccessible right now in Braddock, because somebody tried buying gravel from him in Hazleton there and. Because they were like, hey, where can I get gravel? I said, call Ken Wolbaum. And I called him. The road going into the pit is, it's either underwater or it's so horrible, you can't even get it with a pickup, so. The Braddock Wolbaum pit is probably inaccessible for probably the whole month yet, I think, so that'll be tough.
That one by Dennis Hummel, there you just about got that all out. You're gonna have to try to find out who's gotta reclaim.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look for the contract on that. I don't know if we even have a contract on that one. That was way before.
That's an old pit.
Cause who's gotta reclaim that? Site, you know, I don't know if the county's responsible or somebody else.
I don't know. We'll, we'll look for it.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd look for a contract first before you attempt any conclusion.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll address that situation.
I had Randy Hake call me. In regards to the pit that's to the south of that Dennis Hummel pit. And something, they're bringing in. What's his name from Jameson Valley City?
Trabinsky?
Yeah, to screen some more gravel. Are we gonna be looking for more good gravel or no, in the southern area? I don't know.
We're, we've got a few, few people that are on the list that prospect. I don't know about the southern area, but. Yeah, we can, we're still looking for good gravel, so if any landlord knows that they think they have gravel, contact the county.
Is there any in the southwestern part? Over that Westfield hole?
Well.
Any prospects or no?
Yeah.
There's some way down south to counter there, yeah.
Down the state line almost, right?
What's his name is or.
Cause I know the, uh, I know that we got the Cattail pit, that was kinda where, southwest. Pit for now, anyway.
Is that good gravel or not? That's sandy, isn't it?
It's on the sandy side, yes.
It's more of a class five, right?
Doesn't even make a fine.
I wasn't here when they pulled the specs on it, so. But no, I mean, we're still. Actually, that'll bring up another thing that, uh. Last fall. It was, I think it was David Slicking.
Swartner, yep.
Off of fifty-fifth. Up on fifty-fifth. The county used to have a pit back there years ago.
Where's this at?
Straight north of, straight north of the Braddock turn out there. That's the uh. It's the Schlittenhardt Ranch right up the highway.
Oh, the east side, yeah. Okay, okay.
So there was a old county pit back there. Last year he asked us if we would. Fix the road up. For him and then he would more likely give us access to a prospect for gravel, something like that. So. The county's still okay with that when we move forward and uh. Get a. We'll talk with the state's attorney too and get a kinda like contract or a lease agreement with them. And then. The, to fix the road, it's not, it's a little bit of blading, one culvert and probably a little bit of gravel. So probably all, all a day we could get it done in.
The county did build that road and it is actually fifty.
Four, it's fifty-fifth, I believe?
Fifty-fifth. And I mean, it's, you could tell that the county must've built the road to get into the gravel. And that was, and that's where we had kind of agreed that. I mean, it would be kind of an access road thing. And that would be kind of the initial. Part of the agreement to prospect back there is we could fix up the road, which like I said, I just drove on it not long ago. And. It probably needs a culvert more than anything in that one spot. Other than that, it's, it's really not in bad shape.
Yeah, it's not. And I guess the county didn't reclaim their pit back in the day when they left. So.
Which also gives us a nice spot to probably prospect if there's anything left there and then.
So if the, if the board's still okay with that, we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
So you're, you're gonna go out, you get somebody to dig test holes or what?
Well, we can test them. We'll just. Do our own digging, our own testing.
You can do your own?
Yeah, that's like how most people do it. They dig around and find it and then send the samples in and then. Figure out roughly what they think with the area and depth and.
It's kind of a pretty visible mining area there where the county was before, but. Looks like they were using basically just pit run. I don't know if they, they maybe were streaming a little bit. It looks pretty rugged back there.
So it wasn't, it wasn't cleaned out then by any chance?
I don't.
Not that I'm aware of.
It doesn't sound like it.
And I don't even know if it would, yeah. I think they were just found a spot where there was some stuff sticking out. They just were using it for pit run or nothing like that.
David kind of expressed that there were some other areas. They thought there was more gravel that the county never even went to. Cause it, it might take a. Back then, it might've been a little more expensive to get to. We're nowadays stripping five, ten feet overburden to get down to gravel. It's not a big deal. But back then they wanted it close to the surface. So.
And then sure, Pans was in the gravel.
Well, that's where the, so that, that's where exploring that area was kind of a nice little deal for us and. So, yeah, I'd say go forward with it.
Okay.